And good evening and happy new year, everybody. This is the first regular meeting of the year and I think we will begin with reports from the DIAS. So Ms. Green?
I have nothing to report. It was a quiet holiday.
Mr. Lyndra?
I have a very quick report also, but the BAR did meet in December on the 17th. We issued five certificate of appropriateness, certificates of appropriateness that were issued and approved. We had one multi-unit residential building on Virginia Avenue that was deferred because of lack of detail and specificity, I always have to slow down with that word, in the application, so they'll be coming back to us later. The tree commission, their meeting last week was postponed because of snow and they're meeting right now and so I'm missing that meeting.
Bummer.
Bummer. That's it.
Mr. Solietz?
No report, thank you.
Reverend Heaton?
No report, thank you.
Ms. Hall?
Good evening. Today I'm just reporting that the next school CIP committee meeting will be at Public Works on Thursday, January the 20th, from 1:30 till 3:00 PM.
Right. Right, I've got a couple of things that I wanted to chat with you guys about. The first is Alex was good enough to invite me to an internal city staff meeting with the consultants, the consultants that will be helping us with the comprehensive plan. And I must say that I think the RFP committee did a pretty good job. They left that meeting cautiously optimistic that we've got the right people in place to help us get through this, get through this process. The umbrella consultant there, what I'll call the general contractor, is a company called Roadside and Harwell, RHI, but they have three other subcontracting consultants that they're, that they're working with. One is RHNA Advisors. I have no idea what RHNA stands for, but what they do is real estate development and economic development. That's what their specialty is. The other is Brick and Story and they're going to be very important to, to what we're trying to do because they are a messaging and communications organization that specializes in community outreach. So they're going to be leading our effort to engage the, the public in, in, in our efforts to, to move the ball along. And another important component of this is a, a group called Coats Studio. And what they do is they, they translate the, the language of the comprehensive plan into actual zoning ordinances. So they too will be very important to the, the work we're doing. The RFP review committee is going to segue into the steering committee. We are represented, represented on the RFP review committee by Mr. Solietz and Chiara Meredith Green. Because Chiara Meredith Green is leaving us in June, July?
August.
August. Leaving early, earlier than we'd like. She's agreed to cede that position and I've asked Mr. Lyndra to step in and, and take on that task. The first meeting is January 29th at 5:30. Mr. Lyndra, Mr. Solietz. And we believe, and make sure you hear this, we believe this is going to be a 24-month engagement. So we're looking at two years before we, we actually, we actually are ready to say we've got a revised comprehensive, comprehensive plan in ink.
Chair, that does include, does that 24 months include just the comprehensive plan or the zoning rewrite?
I'm gonna, Mr., our indias director is going to, let me, I'll give, I'll give you the floor in a minute. I want to get through another report. Yeah, but once I cede the floor to Ms. Creasy, then you can come up and, and give us an update on that. The, the other piece that I want to talk about is the Parks and Rec meeting. We had a meeting last Thursday. As you know, I always talk about how busy those guys are and how productive they are. Lots of stuff going on, but there are two things that I wanted to chat with you guys about. The first, there is a lot of weeping and gnashing of teeth as it's to the perceived anemic, anemic budgeting that we, that we, that's out there for the CIP. And council is going to be getting a lot of public input, because we've gotten it, a lot of public input, asking for a little more robust funding for, for a lot of the, the projects that are, that have been in the backlog for, for Parks and Rec. So, so get ready for that council. We, we, we at Parks and Rec and we on the planning commission got quite a bit of input on that. The, the other piece is there are five properties in the Parks and Rec portfolio that either are now or will be parks or be a part of our trail system that have not been named. And there was either a press release that hit today or hit in the next couple of days that talks about asking for public input as it's to naming these five properties. So look for that and the, we, we have a policy in place for naming the, the properties and we will follow that policy. But we voted Thursday to amend the policy, to, to, to put in stone the, the need for, for, for public input when it comes to naming, naming these properties. And so going forward, there are three things that are, that are going to be different in the, in the, in the Parks and Rec naming policy. First, 30 days before a public hearing, we will notify the public that we're going to have a public hearing to, to talk about the names and ask for public input as, as it's to naming the properties. We will then have that hearing and that hearing will be the first of two readings. And we'll, we'll, we'll listen and chat amongst ourselves about what we think, think about what the name, name ought to be. And then we'll have a second reading at the next meeting where we will, we will vote on a recommendation that we'll, we will send to council based on our deliberations and based on the, the input that we've gotten from the public. Are there any questions about that? Right, I will now cede the floor to Ms. Creasy and our director.
Okay. Just briefly before Mr. Kipuna comes up, we have a work session scheduled for the fourth Tuesday in January, which is January 28th, and that is slated to be on the Star Hill Community Vision and Small Area Plan document. We also, we've already talked about the 29th meeting, and then for February, we have one, one pre-application that we are pretty certain will happen for that work session, as well as we're working with the consultants for using that date that you all already have on the calendar for an opportunity for them to speak with the planning commissions. So we will be in touch as, as we get that solidified, but we're hoping that date will work so that it's already on your calendars.
And do we get a little more detail on the consulting engagement?
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you, Mr. Chea, for covering pretty much everything that has to do with the, the planning, comprehensive plan update. And to answer Commissioner Green's question, yeah, the 24 months is based on the schedule submitted by the consultant. And the comprehensive plan, affordable housing strategy, and rewrite of the zoning ordinance is expected to be completed within the 24-month period. And again, thank the planning commission for nominating you a second person to serve on the steering committee. And Jody, I'll be sending you the invite letter tonight, you know, to, so you can get yourself acquainted with what's in the invitation and then probably I raise VP, you know, before the meeting on the 29th.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions, Jim? Thanks. And do we have a list of people that would like to speak? Nobody, okay? All right, what I'm going to do now is I'm going to open up the session for public comment. The comments should be related to things that are not in the part of the, the public hearing that we'll be, we'll be having in, at around 6 o'clock. So if you got to, something you want to talk about that's not a part of the strategic investment area or the Form-based code initiative, now would be an opportunity to speak. If you'd like to speak, state your name and keep your comments to three minutes. And no one would like to speak, I'm closing the public hearing. The consent agenda, we will need to approve the meetings, the amendments from October 29th and November 12th. Is there motion to approve the amendments?
I'd say move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The consent agenda has been approved. We are rolling. Ms. Creasy, is there anything we can cover in the next 15 minutes that we don't need counsel for?
The only items that you all have are, pertain to the hearing that's starting at 6:00.
All right, we will be in recess until 6:00.
Well, we still, yeah.
Won't your counsel get to?
Yeah, until 6:00 o'clock. We're scheduled at 6:00.
We're scheduled at 6:00.
Again, we're in recess until 6:00. All righty, good evening and we are ready to begin the second round of deliberation. Madam Vice Mayor, is counsel in order?
Yes, we are.
Prigged. All right, we, we've got a couple of items that are very closely related, so we're going The, um, the first item is ZT 1-9-1-0-0-2. And this is a, um, a proposed amendment to, um, to add a new zoning, uh, zoning district. The zoning district would be the Downtown Extended Strategic Investment Area District, or DESIA. And the kinds of things that would be regulated in this, um, in this district would be land use, building types, structure types, um, size of the, of the structures and buildings, uh, so mass and height, uh, location, uh, open spaces and, and other things relating to that. There are three sub-classifications in, in these, um, in this district, uh, T4, T5, and T6. The T4, uh, sub-classification allows for three-story buildings with one, um, additional, I'm sorry, three-story buildings with one additional story if in fact, as a bonus, if in fact, the proposed development, uh, meets a certain affordable housing algorithm that, um, that, that has been developed. The T5, um, um, subclass allows for four stories with two additional stories if in fact, the, um, proposed development meets a certain affordable housing algorithm. And then there is ET6, and that allows for five stories with, um, four additional, um, uh, stories as a bonus if in fact, the affordable housing algorithm has, has been met. Now, it should be noted, uh, that the, um, the DESIA is pretty much what, what is now the DE, uh, uh, multi-use, uh, downtown extended multi-use. So the downtown extended SIA is pretty much covers what is currently the downtown, um, extended, uh, multi-use. The uses, um, the uses that are allowed, uses that are allowed are identical, but, um, the, the difference is in the bonuses. In the, um, downtown extended, uh, multi-use, we are allowing four stories with a bonus of five stories, but it's important to remember that that bonus, um, happens when you, um, meet a certain multi-use algorithm. Affordable housing is not factored into the, um, into the DE MU. Affordable housing is only factored into the proposed DESIA, so something to keep in mind as we, uh, as we go through our deliberations. The second, um, second item to be reviewed is ZM 1-9-1-0-0-2. And that pretty much just amends the, the map as you, I, hopefully, you, as you were entering, you had a chance to pick up a copy of, of this map, but that effectively, uh, amends the, um, the map, uh, to support the, um, DESIA. So, um, I think that's it from me. Mr. Huluska, I think you have a report.
Members of the commission, Brian Huluska, Principal Planner for the city. Um, this is the second time that this item has been in front of you for a public hearing. Uh, previously came before you in November. Uh, the draft has been updated since that meeting. A little bit of history on the SIA. This was a plan that was a planning process that we, the city undertook, uh, many years ago in 2012 and into 2013 where this area was planned, it's a lo, much larger area that was called the Strategic Investment Area, so when we say SIA, that's what, what we're talking about is the strategic investment area. Um, it actually goes all the way north to Martha, the old Martha Jefferson Hospital and actually surrounds mu, a much larger area than the one you're seeing here tonight. Uh, City Council, after the SIA was passed as an amendment to our comprehensive plan, directed staff to work on the area in front of you as a, a first phase, uh, to explore a new zoning for that area. We engaged a consultant, uh, the Form Based Code Institute, and also, uh, the, uh, DPZ, the planning firm DPZ, to draft a form-based code for us. Uh, they, uh, they presented that in November, um, and they have completed their contract, so you are dealing exclusively with staff from here on out. Um, some of the changes that I want to point out to you, uh, in the draft and for everyone that may be listening in, uh, there were some concerns. First of all, the draft does look much different, uh, as we covered in the pre-meeting. One of the requirements of any zoning ordinance that we have, any code section that we have is that we can publish it with our code publisher, which is, uh, the Municipal Code Corporation. So it's, this code has been reformatted into that format that we can send to them to potentially publish in our code. Uh, some of our consultants in the past have not adhered to that form, and that requires us to change it over. Um, so that may be part of the reason why it looks a little different, why some of the nomenclature and the numbering is very different. Um, there were a lot of concerns about having a separate signage section in the SIA versus the rest of the city. We've addressed that by eliminating the signage section from the proposed draft in front of you, just the city's normal signage section will apply. Uh, additionally, there was a lot of questions about the amended use table in here. Uh, we've elected to eliminate that as well, and we will just abide by the current uses that are permitted in the current zone. We're not, that wasn't really the charge of the consultant to, uh, completely overhaul our use matrix for this area. We're really more concerned about form. Uh, one of the questions that came up, or concerns that came up with, with the commission, from the commission, was the applicability of these regulations because a lot of the statements in it mentioned the applicants should, or developments should do things rather than shall. We've clarified, gone through and clarified that text for you so that it does say shall, which makes it a requirement, not, uh, potential argument over whether it's required or not. There were several questions raised about the affordable housing bonus requirements, there were questions about loopholes like, uh, applicants using entire floors to, uh, provide the minimal amount that they could get away with. Uh, so we've added some language in there that, uh, requires a certain average size, things like that, so that, those provisions, I believe, are, uh, under Items 1.6, uh, but as you read the affordable housing bonus section, you'll see a number of bullet points that we've added to kind of further clarify and make sure that those units are of a comparable size and are spaced out throughout the building. Uh, we have removed the business incubator computer lab reduction allowance for the affordable housing bonus. Uh, I think staff was kind of unanimous in not wanting to police what a business incubator computer lab was. Uh, we've also added, uh, we're proposing a modification to Section 341200, which is our definition section, to add all these definitions in as well. A few other items out there, uh, that have come up in the past. Uh, one, uh, several concerns have been raised about historic districts, the impact of the historic district. While Chairman Mitchell mentioned that this does overlay mostly with downtown extended zoning, there are a few other zoning classifications that are included in, particularly along Ridge Street, there's the West Main East zoning district that is proposed to be rezoned, and Ridge Street also includes a historic district that has an overlay zone. The advertisement for this does not mention those overlay zones at all because we're not proposing any changes to them, they're not shown on the map because, once again, we're not proposing any changes to them. We would have to advertise a change for a change to be made. Um, so those zones and those regulations are all intended to stay exactly as they are. Uh, there are no changes proposed in front of you tonight, nor could we consider any, if any, were to arise. Um, other items, uh, there was a, somebody raised a, a point that the, uh, previously the Housing Advisory Committee made a long list of recommendations many years ago regarding, uh, the provision of affordable housing. Two of those recommendations were kind of long-term recommendations about eliminating minimum lot sizes and, uh, also eliminating the density dwelling units per acre standard. Uh, so, one of the commissioners asked that we kind of mentioned in the public meeting that this code does that. Uh, it does exactly what the hacker kind of mentioned on those two items. There's no minimum lot sizes, no required, uh, density maximums or minimums, it's all governed by floor height and your ability to adhere to the building code and the other provisions within this code. Um, lastly, Commissioner Soli Yates mentioned, uh, a question about the income to, uh, impact to low-income residents, uh, in the district and around the district. Um, there hasn't been a specific analysis pinpointing that partly because I think a lot of this depends on how much development activity you may see out of this. Uh, right now, obviously, this area is zoned for nine-story, potentially nine-story buildings under a mixed-use, if the mixed-use building is built. Uh, this covers two properties that are currently low-income properties. Um, obviously, Friendship Court has already gone through a site plan process, they are proceeding through their redevelopment plan independent of this process, they have been consulted on this, but, uh, they were moving long ahead of this process and have a, a Phase 1 plan already in place that they, I believe, intend to start this year, so they're well ahead of this. Uh, additionally, the CHRA process is going through, uh, their own public process for all of their items. Uh, I think the other concerns that are out there potentially are, would this spur redevelopment in the zone? Um, you know, a lot of that depends on financing. Some of the zoning stuff that we do, I think we like to think that we have a really large influence on this, but really what we're doing is setting out a form for what we will see in the future, but a lot of that stuff is time-dependent, a lot of it's based on national economy. Um, any developer would tell you right now nationally, we're in overtime on the boom times, uh, we're long overdue for a recession, which can pause any kind of development activity. So, a lot of that stuff is, we'll have to see what's going on with it. It does raise the, I will say, the bonus factors here guarantee that you would get, if somebody's going to pursue a bonus on these buildings, an additional height, they do have to provide affordable units, there's no guarantee for that in the zone now. Uh, people can do mixed-use buildings without a special use permit, they don't have to comply with Section 3412 of our code, so you do get some variation in unit price based on this code, uh, if people do pursue those bonuses. I do want to raise the prospect that, you know, the heights are such that no one ever pursues the bonuses, that's certainly out there and a possibility, so, um, but my crystal ball, I can't do so much with my crystal ball. And I'm happy to take any questions you may have about the text or map.
Okay. Questions?
So this in no way affects the already proposed plan that's already been approved for Friendship Court?
It does not, it does not, it does not, uh, impact certainly the Phase 1 plan. Uh, Phase 2 and Phase 3, uh, they do not have site plans submitted for those, they do kind of have an overall cons, conceptual plan, but this text, uh, the text of this ordinance was handed to them, we've asked them to, we asked them, and we actually had a work session with our consultant to kind of go over any concerns they had about this code and what it would do to their, uh, overall ability. I mean, they obviously easily meet the affordable housing criteria for bonuses, but I don't think they're pursuing that bonus height anyway because of just their construction methods they're, they want to do.
So you got no feedback from them on this?
We, we had a bunch of feedback back and forth, and they definitely, some of their concerns were raised and, and put into the draft, uh, months ago. Uh, that was, I think even last year, or early last year, um, but we're not aware of any objections they have to this draft of the code.
Questions? Gary, anything?
I was a little curious about the affordable housing bonus process, uh, where if someone were to apply for the additional height, is that spelled out, um, in a way that, that can be, uh, calculated prior to actually submitting a site plan?
Yes, in fact, the way the, one of the new changes to this code is the, the Planning Commission asked for a binding covenant, uh, as a means of guaranteeing, uh, there's a lot of concern about people saying they're going to do affordable housing, getting through the construction process and then, you know, coming hat in hand and said, "Sorry, we can't deliver on what we said we were going to do." So, uh, one section in there is, uh, Section 1.6.2.5, which deals with a binding commitment for affordable housing, uh, that must be recorded prior to any building permits being issued. So that's a more robust guarantee than our current code permits, so they would have to actually lay out, "We are going to do this number of units to achieve this, you know, to get this bonus, we need to do this number of units." They'd have to identify that on a site plan. Once that site plan's approved, they would have to enter into this binding commitment prior to starting construction.
Okay, so the, the bonus calculation for the developer is right there for them to look at prior to submitting a site plan?
They would, they couldn't certain, they could, the, a developer would look at the code and see if they can meet it, and then they would, in the site plan process, say, "Here's what we intend to do," and once that final site plan is approved, that's a, a signed legal document that they have to adhere to, but we're going to the added step of actually saying, "Okay, here's an agreement, you fill this out, you get in order to get this bonus."
The calculations.
The calculation, the number of units, all of that, yes.
Ms. Soli Yates?
Question about Grave Street. Uh, it's, uh, a little bit different than the rest of what we're looking at. Uh, can you help me understand the, the history there? Why is it there and, and what, what, what is the public value of its presence?
The, the main reason it's there is because that was Phase 1. That was the, kind of the dividing line that we had, we were running it along streets and I don't think we were do, doing property lines. Additionally, I think there was a question of how that those houses would be impacted by the change to T5 above them, uh, to the north. Uh, so, there was some question of how that those, you know, if you have four-story or even six-story buildings behind them, what type of transition do you have between that and the rest of the neighborhood? So, the, the, the easy reason is council directed us to look at it. Uh, the reason it's T4 is T4 is a three-story height with a potential for a fourth story. Um, the current maximum height in that zone is 35 feet, which is three stories. Additionally, I know some people have expressed concern about potential redevelopment out there. I would point people to the lot sizes that are currently existing, the housing values that are currently there, and the need to provide parking for new development or any kind of redevelopment, large-scale redevelopment in that zone. Um, I would, I would be kind of surprised if something were to happen along those lines.
Um, couple of, um, um, couple of redundant, uh, questions and points just out because I really think it's important that we, we understand this. The existing, pretty much, th, this area is, is zoned downtown mixed-use.
Mostly, yes.
With downtown mixed-use, by right, you get, um, 50 feet or stories.
Mm-hmm.
And if they meet the, um, the mixed-use, not affordable housing, but if they meet the mixed-use algorithm, they can grow up to 101 or five additional stories.
Correct.
And that's anywhere in, in the area.
Anywhere.
So, let's talk about the, the public housing properties, um, that are to the, to the, to the east. They could actually build a nine-story thing by right there if they just use the mixed-use algorithm.
Mm-hmm.
Let's talk about, uh, the Hebrew Cemetery to the west. Again, by right, they can build, uh, 50 feet and then with mixed-use algorithm up to 101 feet or nine stories.
With zero setback.
And all they have to do is make, meet the mixed-use algorithm.
Correct.
And that's in effect right now?
Right now, that's, that's what it is today.
Yes.
With this, we, we, I, I think two things happened, and again, I just wanted to make sure I understand it and might, might think it is on target. With this, we do get more scalability because we've got the T4, T5, T6, so we, we can scale down as, as appropriate.
Mm-hmm.
And we also get, if this works the way we envision it, we get affordable housing.
You do, yeah, the, the overall maximum height in all of that purple area that you see, which, you know, the, the Hebrew Cemetery is on, is right there, it's the cutout around X, uh, was not included in Phase 1, uh, so that's, that's the parcel we're talking about, and then obviously the, the Sixth Street housing complex. Uh, the T4 zone would allow a maximum of four stories, so that would be the by right, uh, you know, the, the by right in DE and you'd stop at that point. Um, so, yeah, the, the effect of this is for the majority of the area around the Hebrew Cemetery, uh, you're looking at a maximum of six stories if they can hit the affordable housing bonus guidelines, if not, they'd be capped out at four stories. Um, and then, like I said, the current DE zoning, which, the Hebrew Cemetery is zoned DE as well as the rest of that block, uh, there is no setback required, so that comes right up to the line.
Okay. So, hey, I'm just thinking aloud to make sure I've got this right. We, we do get a little more flexibility with, um, the DESIA. We have not as much flexibility with, um, the DEMU, which exists today, because we, we can scale, and again, selfishly, we can get more affordable housing.
Correct.
Can we define flexibility and what that means? Because I think the word flexibility might...
I think, I think when you go through the T4, T5, T6.
Right.
Options, we have the ability to, to move those around. And so with T4, we, with, with DEMU... And so with T4, we, with, with DEMU, you're going to get four and five, so nine stories. With T4, you're going to get three and one. Or, go ahead, please.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to ask it a different way. With this form-based code, it is what it is, there's not a special use permit or a rezoning process? So there's flex of, while you're talking about flexibility, there's more flexibility in a by right use, because there's many options to make a parcel-by-parcel change.
Yeah, again, the flexibility I'm speaking to is just, you've, you've got more options, is the word I should use. You've got more options with the DE SIA than you do with current zoning. Any other questions? Gary, you look like you got one.
Well, it was, it was along the same lines as with the flexibility of the options. Does the form-based code provide the process whereby the public or developers or landowners would have a stake in conversations about what abets, abates their property? Is it, does, or is that just the standard process like a special use permit? It's not like that process?
Not, it's not the same process as a special use permit. Currently, I think it's, it's a process similar to our current site plan process, which is when somebody submits a plan on a property, we notify the, the properties within 500 feet, we invite them to a site plan conference, we notify them that it's out there.
And that, that will happen with the form-based code as well?
Absolutely. All site plans, we're not, we're not deviating from that process.
So can I make some clarifications on this, these two conversations? I think even for myself, right, I own property in the city, so even for myself, it's that fear of the unknown about what's going to happen when that property sells. So for me, as I look at this, it gives us an understanding of what can happen when there's that fear of the unknown, well, that property next to me that has a by right use, for instance, in the middle of Belmont, where that land is, whatever it is now, and we can go however many stories with however many units. And then we can come in and have a special, it's, it's that fear of the unknown, right? Who's going to be on the Planning Commission and who's going to be on council at the time that they come in and now want 101 feet and put the density so dense that there's a parking problem, there's a traffic problem, there's all the other problems, right? So there's a little more in, in my mind, and please tell me if I'm speaking out of turn, there's a little more in my mind of consistency with knowing what's going to happen as opposed to having all the other things at play.
Yeah, the intent, yeah, when you, when you look at other communities that have gone through the form-based code route, what they, the stated, one of the main reasons is to get away from use-based regulations, obviously. But in the process, I think the idea is that you, like you said, you have a regulating plan, you have guidelines that kind of define what you can and can't do. You don't have these kind of other avenues by which you can gain additional height. There's, you know, a very large range in the downtown, as we know, now, our downtown regulations allow for, you know, somewhere between 40 and 70 or 101, depending on what you do.
With no affordable housing guarantee?
Correct. Well, with, is, you can pay your way out of it.
Right.
So the, yeah, so that, this is, this, I think, tightens the frame, it gives you an idea. The SIA plan that this is based on mentioned kind of a general of four and five-story height throughout the area, that that's what people wanted to look for, that they were looking for, you know, a lot of, that was kind of the, the idea behind this. It's the reason why there's a lot of T5 on that map and not a lot of T6 or T4, because it's based on that plan. And, you know, that was also part of the, an attempt to try to steer it towards providing a lot more residential in general, and we've also added these bonus factors to try to get some of that to be affordable.
All right, um, council, are there any questions from council? Any more questions from the tires, from the university? Any questions?
Sorry, I, I have one, you know, since you brought up the, the possibility that nobody would take the bonus and then you wouldn't have this affordable affordability aspect to it, is there, just correct me if I'm wrong, but there's no way in Virginia that you could bake that into the initial zoning, is that correct?
Correct.
You can't compel a landowner to have the affordable housing as part of the by right development.
Not in the city of Charlottesville, I believe is the correct answer there.
Right, there's currently some differences in enabling legislation between Charlottesville, even Alamo. Alamo and Arlington have different, much more broad enabling legislation. That's something that hopefully the General Assembly will consider changing for us soon, but tonight we can't say that.
I keep looking at the 2013 plan, which has some pretty decent height near the Belmont Bridge, which I don't see in this, this current plan. Can you help me understand the, the change?
I'm not entirely sure why the, why the consultant deviated from that entirely. I think part of it, what I've told several people is, and what we've, I think we tried to cover in November was, I think the consultant, when they looked at where T6 would potentially be available, they also looked at the public space that, you know, kind of as an offset for, okay, we'll give you additional height, but we want to have public space associated with it. And they just didn't identify any kind of public space opportunities over there or didn't look too far into it, or they just, you know, so I, without calling them up and asking exactly why they did that, that would be it. I think they, they kind of fixated particularly on, one of the really guiding principles that they used was Second Street and trying to put as much activity on the Second Street. They saw Second Street as another kind of vital pedestrian connection with the downtown mall and down into the X Park as sort of a, you know, another, the cross spine of the downtown mall is really what that plan visions. And I think there's a lot of concern if you spread T6 throughout this zone, you may not get, concentrate that vitality, may not get kind of the critical mass of street-level activity along Second Street. You wanted to fixate on it. I think if you recall, prior to us taking the uses out, there was a concern about the fact that retail was very limited on the, in the, in the draft that we received from the consultant. They really focused on Second. The SIA plan does not contemplate retail along Garrett, partly because they don't want to saturate the market. So I think that's where some of that comes from and trying to incentivize getting Second Street going and thriving.
Thank you.
Ready for, okay. All right, I, um, I think we are ready to open it up to public comment. And so we are now in the public attention. Liz Russell.
Thank you, Planning Commission and staff, and welcome to new council. I am speaking on behalf of Preservation Piedmont. We are a nonprofit advocacy organization dedicated to preservation, awareness, and Full disclaimer, I live on Grave Street, so I am representing the organization, but I'm also kind of, you know, sort of personally vested. There's also members here tonight from the Belmont Carlton Neighborhood Association. I shared Preservation Piedmont's letter with that group, and I think some, either here as individuals or as, in, in behalf of that organization are here. So you have a copy of the letter that I shared. Our past president also spoke at the November 12 meeting, and I want, and Brian alluded to some of the concerns around historic preservation, so I won't belabor that point, but I do want to make a few notes and just clarify a few things. So first of all, the proposed rezoning does not recognize the two historic preservation and architectural design control districts. We would ask that there be clarity in the language, in the text and in the math, that the ADC districts would not be superseded by the, the zoning. It's, it's nice to know that it, you know, we're speaking to that, but it would be really great if it was clarified. Also, some protection and reference to the historic cemeteries in the area as well is important. Secondly, Grave Street, it is in the North Belmont National Register, it is not in a local ADC. So there isn't the same, when we're talking about historic preservation, there's not, you know, the same level of protection in those different areas. Upzoning in that area, and, and you, you mentioned that most of this area was part of mixed use. That part of Grave Street is not part of a mixed use zoning. It's R2, it exists as R2, it's a, it's a, a diverse neighborhood of single-family and multi, you know, two, two-family houses. It already has the features of, you know, these sort of new urbanist principles of walkability, and, and it's historic. So it doesn't seem to follow why it would be upzone to a T4, but in fact, Mr. Huluska indicated that it was sort of just made to fit. I mean, it was, it was modified so that this idea of transects would look good on paper, but I feel that that compromises the integrity of the historic district and puts actually these, these houses at risk. It, it just doesn't make sense to be part of the T4. It's like a square peg in a round hole. So our comprehensive plan states that we value the historic resources in our area, so I urge that the Planning Commission make efforts to protect them. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Diane, Diane Hillman.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I'm Diane Hillman. I am currently president of the Board of Directors of Congregation Beth Israel. Thank you for having the map there. I think it clearly demonstrates what I'm going to be speaking about for the next couple of minutes. The current zoning, as well as the possible change to the use of form-based code rezoning applied to the land surrounding the Hebrew Cemetery, is of great concern to Congregation Beth Israel and to the broader Jewish community. This cemetery, which is owned and maintained by CBI, was established by the Hebrew Benevolent Society around 1870 to provide a place for Jewish burials. It actually predates the construction of Congregation Beth Israel. The Hebrew Cemetery is directly across the street from Oakwood Cemetery, which dates to the same era. Our cemetery is in active use, is the resting place for over 300 Jewish citizens, and has capacity for several hundred additional burial sites. We hold about 10 funerals a year, and we provide a solemn, calm, private, and peaceful environment for our members and families at funerals when they visit the graves of their loved ones. And we feel that because these visits occur frequently and around the Jewish holidays in particular, we need to have a private, peaceful environment. A proper surrounding environment shows respect for those who visit our cemetery and comfort for those who actually know that eventually they will rest in that cemetery. As president of the Board of Directors, along with several members of our cemetery committee who are here tonight, I must express my serious concerns about the land use surrounding the Hebrew Cemetery. The current zoning allows for a range of between 50 and 100 feet in height immediately adjacent to the cemetery. That is a current threat. The direction of the Planning Commission in considering the rezoning the land in a different way on three sides of the Hebrew Cemetery reconfirms the likelihood that relatively tall buildings will surround the cemetery, with only the first street side of the building, of the land, remaining open to the environment. The current and proposed allowance of buildings of four stories possibly extending to six immediately adjacent to and surrounding our cemetery is a problem. This is from both the perspective of those attending funerals and visit the, visiting the cemetery, and also to those residing in or working in the buildings which would eventually overlook the cemetery. Implementation of both current and, does that mean my time is up?
Pretty much. Go ahead, you, you look like you've only got a couple more seconds.
Yeah, I've got, just a little bit more to go. I hope that the Planning Commission and the City Council will reconsider the current and the proposed zoning changes, allow for setbacks and transitions, stepped-back buildings, whatever mitigating approaches can be used to help us in the Hebrew Cemetery, to make it a much more pleasant place, given that it's a cemetery, for our, our population. I thank you on behalf of Congregation Beth Israel for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I failed to remind us, but please attempt to keep your comments to about three minutes. Neil, Neil Williamson.
Neil Williamson with the Free Enterprise Forum. I have to say, winter is one of my favorite times of year to cook. I'm partial to long, slow, all-day cooking soups like split pea with a ham bone or chili or vegetable. I'll start the soup before breakfast and have it fill up the house all day with its warmth. Dinner time, serve it up with some crusty sourdough bread. Tonight, the Planning Commission is being mandated to make a recommendation on the proposed form-based code for the strategic investment area. While the Free Enterprise Forum is supportive of optional form-based code overlays, the proposal before you is not optional, reduces the development potential of this important part of the city. We believe it has taken a good, long time, but not all the ingredients are there for a good code. The rationale used to initiate the form-based code has dramatically changed as a result of the community engagement process. As Emily Hayes reported in Charlottesville tomorrow last October, quote, "However, the process of drafting the form-based code did not start until one month after the white supremacy rallies in August of 2617. The whole code got sort of derailed, for lack of a better word. It got focused on really, really talking about affordable housing. That's what the residents wanted to talk about," said Mariana Corey, partner in DPZ Cosine that was hired to draft the code. The resulting code that you have before you reduces the potential of housing by way of reducing building height. In the downtown extended area, the current zoning allows up to nine stories. Under the FBC proposal, you can achieve six, provided you, provided affordable housing that remains affordable for 30 years. It's funny, when I look at the ground, the topography of the SIA lends itself to taller buildings, yet the proposed code significantly reduces building height. Make no mistake, mathematically, this is a downzoning. It has lots of pretty pictures, but it's a downzoning. Charlottesville needs more homes, not less. The Free Enterprise Forum asks the Planning Commission to recommend denial of Z1902 and ZM19102 on the grounds that it will reduce housing opportunities and somewhat counterintuitively will harm the economic development in the very part of the city that council has identified as needing strategic investment. Further, we ask City Council to vote down the code change, but not the work behind it. Further engagement with residents and property owners is required to determine a viable, optional form-based code overlay that could mandate affordable housing and allow building heights over six stories. Charlottesville's FBC soup has been cooking for a long time, but absent the right ingredients, it'll be no good, and no one will use it. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Kimber, Kimber, Hanky maybe? Hawkeye? Hawkeye? Hawkeye.
Happy New Year.
Good evening. My name is Kimber Hawkeye. I live with my husband, Charles Uncle, at 709 Belmont Avenue, and I am here of personal concern regarding the preservation of the historical nature of our neighborhood. We, for that reason, agree with all the concerns, brought forward in the letter from the Piedmont Environmental Council, Liz Russell, and so I will not restate that. We met about three months ago on November 12 about this issue to a much, many more people here, and three important neighborhood concerns at that time were brought up. And I don't see really a lot of answers to that in the current plan and proposal, and it just seems like it's been kicked down the road and less people are here. So the questions, concerns that remain are, what are
So the questions, concerns that remain are, what are the long-term effect of this zoning, of the zoning change on low-income housing or low-income households? And why has the city improperly included this half of Grave Street? Doesn't seem very logical, except to fit some arbitrary algorithm. But this is a neighborhood of people who own homes and live their lives, and it shouldn't just be made to fit. There also seems to be market loopholes as far as what can be done with these buildings, with the T4, with the bonuses and the extra height, and then who knows what's going to be done with affordable housing in the end. There seems to be a history in Charlottesville of a lot of promises for affordable housing, and that doesn't happen. And if you judge future behavior by past acts of behavior, there's a lot of time, a lot of promises are made that don't come through in the end, and so I'm not sure if those affordable housing units are going to happen, or, you know, will there be the penthouses on the top and such. So there's a lot of concerns about maintaining the historical integrity of this half of the street, and these questions do remain about what's the answer to the effect of these changes on the zoning for low-income households. Despite the months of questions, we've had some emails with Neighborhood Development Services regarding Grave Street and why it was included. There's no real answer to that, and it seems to be tonight, as was pointed out, it was a matter of just making it fit the algorithm. That being said, behind those houses, there's a big parking lot. Make your transition area back in there instead of disturbing these households. R2 is not mixed use. It's two-family households, and so that's very different than what's being proposed currently. And this is a historic area, again, that needs to be preserved, and there seems to be a detrimental impact to the historical and residential nature of Grave Street. And that's why we want you to reject this plan as it stands. Finally, regarding the promises of affordable units, your own form-based code consultants stated that form-based code was not a way to resolve the affordable housing issues, and we missed a long list of projects that were supposed to be affordable, and then they're not in the end. And so it just seems that the lure of affordable housing is a false promise. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Bear with me, I left my glasses out in the car.
You want to borrow mine?
That's okay. May make it worse, who knows? I'm here supporting, I am here tonight supporting form-based code tonight regarding the property question. However, I do feel that it needs some modification and clarification. I'm not going to repeat many of these points that have been brought up in the past, but I do want to bring up to your attention the points brought out by Liz Russell, President Preservation Piedmont, and please pay attention to the points that she brought up in her letter that she sent out previously, as well as tonight. I do feel that Grave Street should not be included in this rezoning. As a matter of fact, it's my understanding that Brian Husker said that it was a mistake for Grave Street to be included in the rezoning. If so, it needs to be removed and left with the current zoning. This begs the question, is it tent for the long-term plan to lay groundwork for the tearing down of the current bungalows and then redeveloping the land into four-story buildings? Obviously, this would not be a crowd pleaser for the Belmont neighborhood. Last night, I was at the Belmont Carlton Neighborhood Association meeting, and there was quite a bit of concern at that meeting for the Grave Street situation. Some of those people I know cannot be here tonight, otherwise they would be speaking about their concerns. I will also point out, too, that I hear back from people that get a little, they come to a meeting like this tonight, and then there's another meeting two months, three months down the road, and they get a little tired of the meetings from the standpoint, you know, they've got busy lives and they've got things to do, and so it makes it difficult for them. I'm also going to read part of an email that I sent out to someone tonight, today, as a response to something that they said. And I got the wrong email. I basically was indicating that I did not agree with a statement somebody made. First zoning can be changed, they were basically commenting that zoning can be changed under the current plan, and with the form-based code, it could always be changed. Well, that can be done now. We see all the time with SUPs and requests for changes of zoning. I believe the form-based code will put an end to the SUPs as we know it. All will know what is expected of them and will give the city staff and planning commission guidance. Let's not forget that the comprehensive plan is generally ignored currently. I do agree with the points that Liz made in her letter. On the making of affordable housing, what we are talking about is new construction. We're talking about, what we are really talking about is a discount from the market rates. There's still many who do not find the housing affordable. New construction is expensive. We're not going to achieve true affordability until we rehabilitate old housing stock. We need to purchase land to be used at a later date for housing done with government money or tax credits. Departments of Carlton Road that are under construction now are a good example of that. We also need to work with the county and look at affordable housing as a joint issue. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Travis Pietala from the Southern Environmental Law Center. Now, I first want to thank the planning commission and staff for taking this additional time to review and approve the draft form-based code before the commission makes its recommendation to council. While it's important the city acts quickly to fix the flawed current downtown extended zoning, it's also important we get this one right, and some of the changes staff made to the draft since November will help do that. However, there are still some aspects we think need to be improved in the draft that goes to council. Starting with affordable housing, recent changes make clear that affordable units must be built within the same building and have a similar distribution and makeup as the market rate units. But there's still one issue we raised in our comments in November that does not seem to have been addressed. The requirement to build affordable units in exchange for bonus height continues to be stated only as a percentage of the incremental units built in the bonus floors. Thus, the code still appears to allow a developer to build just one affordable unit in a building and qualify for up to four bonus floors. All they would have to do is have each bonus floor be one or two large penthouse-style units. And based on our reading of the recent changes, they still wouldn't fix that, given the many caveats provided. So we again urge the city to consider adding a stronger backstop to prevent this outcome, even if it's as simple as requiring at least one affordable unit for each bonus floor awarded. Shifting to open space, green spaces and recreation areas are a major component of this area today, and they are an essential element of any healthy community. Along those lines, we appreciate changes made in the draft to require any development of greater than one acre to provide some type of open space. However, for these sites, the code allows open space to be either of type B, C, D, or E, or a publicly accessible courtyard. Yet unlike the other types, courtyards have no size or dimensional standards in the draft. It seems they can basically be as small as a developer wants to make them. We think courtyards probably shouldn't be an open space option here, but if they are, at the very least, the code should set minimum standards to ensure they're meaningful spaces. Related to that concern, the prior draft stated that the lone mandatory open space at the center of the highest intensity part of the SIA had to be either a square or a plaza. That requirement has been removed from this draft, so it now appears that even this key mandatory open space can be satisfied with a simple courtyard. We can't imagine that's what the city envisions for this critical location, and it's a far cry from what's shown on the map behind you. We strongly urge the city to reinstate the requirement for a higher level of open space at this location, such as a square, plaza, green, or park, and further, that this open space be at least a half acre in size. Thank you again for your consideration, and we urge you to include these items in your recommendation to council.
Thanks.
Good evening. I'm a resident of the city, and I was recruited by some neighbors who couldn't come tonight. And so I'm sort of speaking on their behalf, but I have some last-minute concerns, and I guess one of the things is, is it's not clear on these maps where the difference between T5 and T6. I understand the difference, but I can't tell where they are. And I happen to live at Garrett Street, 200 Garrett Street, and, you know, an Apex building is going up in the parking lot of the ACAC. And if the algorithm, you know, says mixed use, you're allowed to get bonus floors, the presentation I've seen on that building, it has one residential unit, and it's going to be eight stories high. And part of it is, I live in a mixed residential-commercial unit, and we already have, you know, behind the glass building going up is an office building. Apex is going to be pretty much an office building. And part of, I thought, the idea of having mixed residential-commercial is that you'll have activity at night. You'll have people walking, coming back and forth. But instead, we're going to get all these nine-story or eight-story dark buildings at night that are almost entirely commercial. So I'd like to make sure that in this algorithm state that it's got to be more than one residential unit, and it has to be real. I mean, are they really going to rent that out and have access to that building for one residential unit? And the other thing is, is I just don't understand why we're going so tall and dense when we have sidewalks where you can't even walk a golden retriever down it without stepping in the street every time you meet someone. You cannot go take a baby stroller down there, or someone with a walker, without someone having to step into the street. So I think in this code, you need to be thinking much more about what the infrastructure is, how you can walk, and how many more cars are coming to these office spaces. We already have gridlock coming out of the Water Street parking lot and the train every night practically. And now we're going to have Apex Building with eight stories, we're going to have the other building with eight stories, we're going to have the ice rink with 10 stories. So that, I just feel like, why are we trying to turn Charlottesville into this, you know, nine-story? I mean, DC can keep the, you know, things below the Capitol and Washington Monument. I think, I really wonder why we are going, especially with the commercial, our mixed use. There is no affordable housing requirement at all. You're just getting more congestion. And, you know, yes, I want to see Charlottesville thrive. I think smart development is a good idea, but I have some questions. Thank you.
Yeah, my name is David Trussler, and I wanted to speak against the proposed new zoning area that includes the Ridge Street area and going up Main Street, including that they need to not take any of the property that includes Salvation Army property, the church, the soup kitchen area, that's where they offer free meals to the poor and disabled, the Center of Hope Shelter and Homeless Shelter. I'm not, I didn't list my address, but I'm not currently homeless. I live in the Carlton area. But I'm dependent upon Salvation Army for my meals, and the soup kitchens are when I go during the day, which I still go to Blue Ridge House, but I don't get paid anything for it. And as I said before, I need to live largely partly because I'm, this is something that must not go to Donald Trump or anyone in his administration, which is that I'm the man that meant life continued on the world when the world would have become marvelous in 2007. And he knows those words, but he doesn't know my name or where I am. If he knew where I was, he would hire a hitman to kill me. It's known by 22 FBI officers, because I brought it forward when I was on the bus and where I go during the day, Blue Ridge House, for the Canadian government to buy US government agencies and everything to do with the government. Or the government, the government went down the tubes is what happened. And I also brought it forward on the bus for the Canadian government to buy banks, particularly Bank of America, and some transit driver was object to my writing the bus because I needed to do that. But if that hadn't been done, no one would have access to their accounts at Bank of America or any other bank. I need to live, and we need life to continue for those who go on with.
And thank you very much, David.
This is different. Good evening. Thank you very much. I'm Kathy Galvin, and I'm a resident of 712 Lyons Avenue, Charlottesville, and thank you for all your work, and Happy New Year. And I hope you had a nice holiday. Unfortunately, the issues that you face every time you come to this day is never go on holiday. One of those issues that impacts all 6,400 acres of this city is zoning. Our existing zoning ordinance remains a confusing tangle of process, regulation, and subjective decision-making, add speculation to that, despite the fact that it is the main means of implementing our community's vision plan, which is the comprehensive plan. Our continued failure to rewrite our zoning ordinance, however, means that it will continue to be changed, but in a haphazard, piecemeal fashion, one special use permit and one downzoning request at a time. That's one reason why the strategic investment area plan, which became part of the comprehensive plan in 2014, called for replacing existing zoning with a form-based code. The strategic investment area plan, I would like to add, has been committed to affordable housing and inclusive neighborhoods since the beginning. You can see the guiding principles in your Page 40 of your packet, tonight's packet for this evening's discussion. In order to implement that plan's vision, like I said, it called for a form-based code, and that's why in 2016, the city council and planning commission authorized the form-based code for 80 acres, 1% of the city within the strategic investment area. Eight years, over $600,000 later, and 50 to 60 community engagement events later, this commission tonight will decide whether or not to pass this policy and planning practice onto city council for consideration. Unlike existing zoning, this form-based code does implement the comprehensive plan. Its vision for equity, sustainability, and authenticity. It does that by, one, requiring private developers to build affordable dwelling units on-site in exchange for height. If you need to tighten that up, I'm sure you will. Promoting a range of housing types for all income levels, fostering public places, walkable blocks, and streets safe for walking, cycling, and taking the bus. All the new streets in this area are going to be subjected to the Streets That Work policy that was recently codified by the Standards and Design Manual. We will not have those narrow streets and narrow sidewalks in these new pieces of infrastructure. Four, making site plan reviews more transparent, predictable, and efficient, and that will facilitate building more units. And five, establishing transition zones between areas of high and low-intensity development without constituting an upzoning or a downzoning. That is how I was, it was explained to me that the T4 was applied to the Grave Street area, because to do anything less would have been a downzoning to the R2 existing zoning. So that is something to clarify. So again, thank you for your good work. This needs to be looked at in conjunction with a whole slew of other policies and strategies to expand affordable housing. It's something that you've been talking about. We will be getting more information from the roadside Harwell team, but nothing about this zoning precludes what their work will do, and their work will not come to fruition until another two years. It's been eight years. It is time to finally make a decision and to actually vote for progress. Thanks so much.
Thanks. Flash. Oh, sorry. Stacy, Stacy, hold on. Flash.
Thank you all for holding this meeting and giving us an opportunity. My name's Stacy Miller. I live on 1007 Sixth Street Southeast, where, where the sidewalk ends, um, Sixth Street and a dangerous intersection of Montrose and Sixth. I walk on Sixth Street every day, I bike on Sixth Street every day, I go through X every day with my sons. And this is a, um, out my kitchen window where I spent most of the day today, I have a home-based business, food business. I could see clearly out my window, um, three doors down, what could be a six-story building. Right now, it's a rather large set of trees. So I thought a lot about this and what it would impact in terms of the livability of, of my neighborhood, the safety of my children. I first want to echo some of those sentiments that were brought up about green space. I, I echo that. And I think that, I find it really unfortunate, a couple of things very unfortunate about this process. A, I just want to make a request in the future, when mailings are, go out, that you practice what black and white looks like before you mail them all out, because this is completely unintelligible. A color-coded map is hard to decipher in black and white. So a lot of us came here with more questions than comments, I think, just as we did to the last meeting. My second unfortunate observance is, I find it really sad that, um, we're using building height as a conflated proxy for affordability, um, or even density as a proxy for affordability. And I, I'd like to see evidence, um, that solely using bonus height as an incentive is an effective incentive for affordable housing. Secondly, why are we using the term affordable housing as if it were a negotiable luxury that we're happy with not having if it doesn't work out? If the developer doesn't really prioritize having that extra story, and then there's no, um, the vision that Kathy articulated of the SIA being a truly affordable and livable area, um, never comes to fruition. If, if a developer is content to, to stay with the four stories or the five stories, the six stories, how does that achieve any affordable housing if that's the only incentive that we're using? I don't find that particularly effective. I have another of other comments, but I can make those in writing. Thanks for that opportunity.
Thanks. Frank. And pronounce and spell your last name for me.
It's Flaschenreem, and it's F-L-A-S-C-H-E-N-R-I-E-M as in Mary. I live right directly behind Nolan's on Dyce Street in Fifeville. And I just wanted to comment, tacking on to something she had said. I received three or four mailers about this, and then there was also a couple of signs posted in my neighborhood, none of which I understood anything of what was going on or why it was going on. And so I had to come here tonight, and I do have a better understanding of that. I'm not very connected to the community quite yet, but as I get to, to know it a little bit more. But again, the mailers told me nothing about what was actually occurring and why we're doing it. So, thank you.
Thanks. Is anyone else that would like to speak? Ms. Johnson?
Good evening, and Happy New Years to you all. So it, um, since this process of introducing form-based code, again, I think I say this every time I come before you all, we asked the staff, and we asked City Council, and we asked the Planning Commission, what is the impact of this on poor people? Brian attempted tonight to give something, and I was getting excited back there, thinking that he was going to give me something that can tell us what is going to impact. But I really didn't hear anything except for that it will probably impact two sites. Maybe I missed the second site, but you mentioned Friendship Court, but I didn't hear the second site, that it might have some impact. And what would those impact be? Again, there is a certain, um, portion of our community who don't understand all of that, but what they do want to know is how does it impact me? Where am I going to go? How is it going to look? We're not getting that. Um, this timing isn't right. At the December meeting, there was an overwhelming input to wait and put it into the comprehensive plan. Then it was the holidays. People don't pay attention to things. Maybe you did send something out. I was at a meeting today where I was asking, did you know this was going to be on the Planning Commission meeting, and did you see the changes of what the staff has done? And folks, there were a lot of people who didn't know. So for me, I call that a little sneaky. I call it, don't take it personal, that's just my bias, okay? There was no information posted online in advance to tonight meetings. It's so unclear and hard to understand, impossible to track changes from the last meeting, I just said that. Just wanted to make sure you understand that. Because state laws are changing, why can't we wait to see what's coming on that state level? I know Kathy is saying it's too long, it's been eight years, but if you really want true, um, input, true, um, involvement, as the cities say, sometime it takes years. Ask Habitat. Habitat learned from what they did on, I can't even think of the name, over there, um, that...
Sunrise.
Sunrise. They learn, and they're not making the same mistake out in...
Southwood.
Southwood. It takes a long process.
I got you, George.
Thank you. It's a long process, but it's, but it's being done correctly. It's being done right. And so for, I just wanted to point that out, to say, you know, sometimes it's just, you just need to back up and slow down, and we do want input, and I don't feel like, and I do want to know how it's going to impact, um, CRK, but that's another time.
Anyone else like to speak?
Excuse me?
Would anyone else like to speak?
Yes.
Hey, come on up.
Good evening, Chair Mitchell, Commissioners. It's nice to be with you this evening. I probably have as long a history with the SIA and the form-based code as anyone in the city was there with Kathy, Valerie Long, and others on cold days, walking, uh, the entire SIA with residents who chose to participate at that stage, and other community leaders and investors and developers and so forth. And I have always supported the concept of the SIA for undeveloped and redeveloping areas. And I've also supported the form-based code, um, for undeveloped and intentionally redeveloping areas. But I ask that you look closely at the boundaries. Several people have talked about excluding Grave Street. I wonder if you should even just look at that entire area on Avon Street, east of Avon Street, and perhaps Ridge Street as well. I wonder if it's, if it's premature to have them as form-based code at this point in time, if that would encourage speculation that would just drive up court prices more. These are areas where there's already an existing grid and the consistent patterns of spatial organization of established neighborhoods and streets, the very characteristics that we seek to find in form-based codes. You can deal with some of those situations with infill, ADUs, and other measures that will increase density in your comprehensive zoning update and rewrite. I'm pretty familiar with the form-based code. Since the 1990s, I've, I've had three training sessions and short courses, one with the grand man, Duane himself, and two more recently here in the city as a planning commissioner. And I would, we know that form-based code and historic districts, our ADC, can coexist. But I do believe we should build in some specific references to those in our ordinance so that we make sure that we don't lose sight of them, that the form-based code does not overdominate, uh, these existing districts where we've already made decisions. I'm particularly concerned about, uh, the historic character of Ridge Street. We've already talked about Grave Street, which isn't a local historic area, but which has, uh, the, the scale and characteristics that I think we want from form-based code. And I'm also particularly concerned about the iconic Flower Mill on Old Avon Street. Do we build in some references, perhaps there incentives or bonuses that could be available for preserving and rehabilitating those, those structures? So tonight, I, I ask you to support this. I know the pressure you're under of the 100 days, that you need to make a decision tonight, and you can't defer at another time. So I would suggest that you send this to council with additional measures for them to address, such as tweaking the map, particularly looking at the established streets, building in protections for cemeteries, and also give particular emphasis to, uh, the impacts that there will be on vulnerable populations and our existing affordable housing, whether it's affordable now, or perhaps was acquired by people when it was affordable, and, and if they were forced out, would not be able to replace that in, in this area or other areas of the city. So thank you very much, and good luck tonight.
Thanks. And would anyone else like to, please?
Good evening, members of the commission, Chairman Mitchell. My name is Maynard Syke. I'm a planner and a land use attorney who've practiced a long time here in Charlesville. And I represent Monachello Associates, the owners of the X property. Principal partner, Mr. Kootner, is here and will probably also speak to one of the issues you've discussed tonight. I want to say that, um, you have a letter from me that sort of outlines the overarching issues with this proposal. And I think, even though staff has made some significant amount of changes and cleaned up some issues, um, those overarching concerns remain. And I won't repeat what's in the letter really for you, but I want to go on to a couple of other points. I think that what I'm asking you to do is to recommend denial of this proposal as it stands tonight. I don't think that an action to recommend denial prevents further consideration of this. I think, as you've heard many people speak to tonight, it needs more work. And it could be revisited over the next couple of months with work sessions or some better engagement of the landowners and the public and the citizens who have questions. As for process, I want to make one comment. The new draft was issued in December at some point. I don't know how it was actually circulated to the public. It was not a red line, as I would call it, that makes it easy to track the changes from the prior draft. And this has been a major concern of everyone I've spoken to, that it's impossible to know what changes are in the new draft. I think that in itself warrants more time for the public to, and the landowners and other parties to really evaluate it. I want to get to the one issue that has been talked about on the downzoning. One speaker made it clear that this does affect the downzoning, but I want to say that there is some things that haven't really been discussed about that. The downzoning that's involved in reducing the height for mixed-use development from nine stories down to what would be four or five under the T4, T5 transects, uh, has been characterized as, you know, a change in the way you're doing bonus height. I don't think that's a fair characterization. If you're doing a mixed-use building, you have a byright ability to do nine stories. It is not a bonus. I think that it's important to recognize that the need for this downzoning is not at all related to the implementation of form-based code regulations. You want to implement form-based code, we've not really objected to that concept, and you can do it, and it doesn't require reducing the existing height. What you can do, and there were concerns expressed tonight, I think Ms. Green asked about the residents having some predictability about what's built. One of the speakers talked about the impact of height on their property, on the budding properties. Those are the very things form-based code can address through design regulations, such as setbacks, step backs of upper stories, or bulk plane regulations. The downzoning is only related to the attempt to force, uh, some form of affordable housing, and basically, the bonus for the affordable housing is so complicated, more than the existing path through a special use permit, that it will not be taken up by developers. And you will not see that utilized. Thank you very much, and I appreciate your time. Please.
Thank you, Ludwig Kootner, Exartmark. I tremendously appreciate what you have to do and what difficult thing it is. We have so many aspects of it. I just want to throw in some practical things. One, we have to decide if we eat the cake or we keep the cake. We have to think about how we can share it reasonably. And we understand that. I want to give you some things to say. Think about, developers create space. And if you reduce the space, it gets more expensive. Three floors have one roof, costs money. If you have six floors, one roof, to get affordable housing. If you build more houses, there will be competition. There's no competition, and I tell you, it's amazing how much money you make for developers by not putting more product on it. Every other town builds a lot of product, and the price comes down. You've heard, offices are built. We had a plane in front of you, 210 units was turned down. Now it's an office. Now you complain. The other thing is, affordable housing can be funded by taxes. The rest two wasn't done for all kinds of reasons. I understand it all, and I, I don't criticize much, but it would be $980,000 in taxes. You could build a whole bunch of houses for that. So if you take these things in consideration, specifically on X, uh, if you have all these requirements, and to build it, you have to tear down 200,000 feet. You have to build 400,000 just to be even. I think if you can take a calculator, it doesn't work. We work in Richmond. After W2 was turned down, I went to Richmond, 250 units built in two years, next 350 will start in six months. Six months for an approval guaranteed by the city. Here, you take two years, cost a million dollars. That's where there's some affordable housing, so. I am so sorry for you guys for you have such a tough drive. Thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission and council. I'm Valerie Long with the Law Firm of Williams Mullen. We are representing the property located at 310 Avon and its owners and developers, Avon Court, L.C. We've been before you many times on this project. As Ms. Keller indicated, I was a member of the steering committee for the SIA and have been involved consistently ever since. We've been appearing before you on behalf of the 310 Avon property for literally years, several years now, and have correspondence going back to 2016 about our request that this parcel be included as T6 or designated as T6 instead of T5. We've had extensive conversations with the city's consultants. At a prior planning commission meeting, the consultants expressed support for that change. We've had planning commissioners express support for that change. The reason that was stated both tonight and previously was that there was no open space commitments in T5, therefore, we weren't comfortable, like we are in T6 where there's an obligation for open space. I noticed that in the draft today, a new provision, which wasn't highlighted in the staff report, requires open space of very specific dimensions of any parcel over one acre, which would include the property at 310 Avon. So there is a requirement for open space there. It could be designated for T6 and address that concern. That's the only concern that has ever been expressed, to our knowledge, about why this property is not designated for T6. It's at a very low elevation. The owners have been holding off for over a decade, waiting to see what the final design of the Belmont Bridge could, would look like, so they could be sure to develop a building that was contextually appropriate and compatible with the design. At no more than... At no more than four or six stories, it'll be barely the same height as the bridge, and will not achieve the goals. In addition to all of those issues, we do not oppose a Form-Based Code. We've been supportive all along. I want to echo almost identically the comments that Mr. Seip made a few minutes ago. I won't repeat them, but everything he said, we agree with 100 percent. This will not further the goals of affordable housing, as it's been envisioned and stated tonight. It will reduce the number of units that can be provided at this site by three floors. Fewer units is going to mean fewer affordable housing units. The owners are not opposed to a requirement for affordable housing. They want to do their part. They don't oppose a Form-Based Code. Our main concern is the reduction in height. As Mr. Seip noted, calling it a bonus for a mixed-use building, in our opinion, is disingenuous, or it's a misunderstanding. It is a byright 101-foot option. It's a current property right, nine stories. At best, under T5, you can get six stories. That's a substantial reduction in the number of units that can be provided, and will not further the goals and objectives of either the SIA plan or the Form-Based Code as a concept. We would like to work with you. We support it in concept. We think, as many have stated tonight, it would be appropriate for more public engagement and review. I echo the comments about the absence of a black line version of this draft. It's substantially challenging without it. I did reach out and obtain one. I'm sorry that I didn't realize that it hadn't been reposted and shared with others, because it is far easier to understand the changes. Final thing I'll add is the staff report makes note of six bulleted items that were changes. There are far more substantive changes in this draft than are referenced in the staff report. I don't think that was intentional. I think it was a result of a lot of scrambling by staff, meaning deadlines for getting drafts completed and submitted, and in your packets in time, given the holidays and so forth, is always challenging. But there are many more changes. I made a list of them, as I reviewed the black line draft, that are new requirements and new provisions, many of which haven't even been discussed tonight. I'd be happy to run through those. I know I'm over my time, but if any of you all would like some examples, I'd be happy to discuss those with you. I think those changes as well warrant further discussion. I would guess that perhaps many of you are not aware of them, because they're kind of, you know, it's a big document to dig through. So, thank you very much.
Members of the commission, members of council, my name is Walt Heinecke. I live on Amherst Street. Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. I appreciate revisiting this issue again. I have to apologize. I was out of town for most of the holidays. I was out of the country. So, did I miss something? Did you finish the comp plan and the zoning code audit while I was gone? Because the last time that we were here talking about this issue, it was clear that the community was saying, put the brakes on the Form-Based Code until we figured out some sort of rational way to take into account the major initiatives that the city is under process of changing right now. I think the best thing you can do is to light a fire under whoever's holding back the comp plan and the zoning code audit, and the affordable housing strategy that's supposed to be developed as part of the comp plan, and tell them to get this thing done, so we can move on to figuring out whether or not Form-Based Code fits within the new zoning code audit that we're trying to figure out in terms of how to make this town an equitable town and a place where affordable housing can be done. So, I don't see how we're back to square one at this point, and you can do anything other than say no at this point to Form-Based Code. Ms. Galvin was partially right. She referenced the comprehensive plan, but she referenced the old comprehensive plan, not the one that you're working on now. So, let's get that one finished before we figure out how Form-Based Code is going to work, or it's not going to work, right, for affordable housing in this town. Secondly, we still haven't figured out problems about public input. The design, as it's been tweaked for tonight, doesn't give me any confidence that, outside of the current process right now, the public's going to have any way of influencing the way these decisions get made. So, I think you're cutting, if you're going to go forward with this, you're cutting the public out, again, of the process. And I think you should think twice about that, and I think all signs point to saying no to this and holding off. Lastly, when I sat here and listened to every public comment, and when the left and the right are in agreement to say no, that doesn't happen much in this town. It really rarely happens. And so, the left and the right are both telling you tonight, don't do this. Put this off. Wait until we have a rational plan in place, and we can figure out whether or not Form-Based Code in its current version, or in a tweaked version, makes sense for creating affordable housing in this town. Because we really don't know what the impact of Form-Based Code, as it's proposed right now, is going, what kind of impact it's going to have on affordable housing. So, I encourage you to vote no tonight, to send that no vote on to council, and I hope council's listening, and hope council will think reasonably about this, and think, okay, we have a zoning code audit coming, we have a comprehensive plan coming, we have an affordable housing plan coming. Let's do this in a comprehensive and rational way. Thanks.
Would anyone else like to speak? Anyone else? Please, come on up.
Good evening, chairman, members of the board. Thank you for this evening. My question and concern does not apply. I apologize. This is my first time. I am a pedestrian. I run the public buses, and have been for many years now. If this plan does go through, and the construction does start, my concern is simply this. I know that the construction takes up a lot of the roads, takes up space, a lot of the sidewalks. And as a pedestrian, I live near the Grave Street, sorry, the Oak Street graveyard, and I walk to downtown all the time. My concern is this. Are we still going to have our sidewalks? How's it going to affect us as pedestrians? How's it going to affect us on the bus route? Because that street is part of the main, one of the main bus lines. If this construction goes through, is that going to impact us? And in what way? Is it going to change the bus routes? Is it going to change our, where we can walk, and where we can walk safely, lighting, and safety? That's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Would anyone else like to speak? Please.
Good evening, City Council. Thanks for hearing all our input, and I'll be quick, I hope. I actually support Form-Based Code. I'm not sure we have quite the right setup yet, but I think that things that were addressed in some of the design meetings with the consultant say that this actually would be better for pedestrians. This could be better for connectivity. It could be better for public housing, but it doesn't solve the public housing problem. It's just a tool in the toolbox to address it. Whether or not what we have written in this code will do that, I think is yet to be seen. I think, encourage you not to rush this through. Maybe if there is a 100-day deadline, there's some urgent community input you can gather, and in maybe a month's time, we can actually get something better out. Obviously, there's some big parties that play here, including the community and landowners and developers. I don't think you should put the brakes on, because I'm not hearing no from both sides. I'm hearing, tell us more. Let's make it right, and make it good, and not go ahead with something that's kind of partly cooked. Communication with the neighbors, neighborhoods is, you know, if the mailers go out and you can't read them, it's really not doing any good. But neighbors, we also have to look at what's been done already. If you look at the SIA work that was done, and the Form-Based Code design workshops that were done, there's a lot of answers in that. I'm not sure that all the concerns raised at those are addressed with the language of the code. This is where I get stuck. I haven't read it, and I'm not sure I understand it, but some of the concerns that were raised in these meetings, could they be answered by you, or somebody who can say, you know what? We have preserved the public nature of the public space by doing this. If you made it courtyard, sounds like you haven't addressed that. So, the language of this code is so important. Don't rush it through, but I think you have some commitment here for people to really get engaged, and let's do it. And, thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else? Anyone else like to speak? Right, the public evening is now closed, and this procedure. All right. We were contemplating a break, but it looks like the diocese does not want to take a break, so we'll just power through. So, why don't we begin deliberations? Anyone else want to jump in before I start calling on people?
Well, I'd like to clear up something that came up, too, because I had a little confusion with it. The T6 is the boundary of the green space, and that's the only T6 that we have on this map, correct? All the rest of the purple is T5, and then the light purple is a T4, of course. Okay. I want to just clear, because someone expressed confusion with the legend, and I had a little bit of that myself, so, that's how I understood. Thank you.
All right, go right in.
Follow up on Jody's point, just because it's on topic. I might have missed this. Sorry I was late. My car broke down, so I get for not driving for six months. We talked at the work session about more T6 areas. Why didn't they make it into this map?
Maybe we were all weren't in agreement.
It sounded like we had more or less consensus at those. It sounded like we haven't really even discussed it since then.
Let me do something, just for, so we can organize the meeting. And then we'll just open up the deliberations. Remember, there are two things that we need to make a recommendation on. The first thing is the ordinance, and the second thing is the zoning map. And a lot of the stuff that we're hearing, objections are to relate to what you're speaking to, the way the zoning map is going to look, and the impact on Hebrew cemetery, the impact on the public housing stuff, the location of the T6 maybe on Avon or wherever. So, just keep in mind that there are two things that we need to recommend, and we can deliberate all we want to, but at the end of the day, we need recommendations on the ordinance, and recommendations on the zoning map. Sorry. So, Ms. Green, you're about to jump in.
I should, maybe we weren't all in agreement on that.
Okay. Is that all you wanted to say?
Oh, I've got plenty to say.
Why don't you kick some?
Do you want me to go?
Go. Fire it up.
Couple things. I want to first say, this continues to come up, and Alex, I don't know why. Communication with our neighbors, right? You're right. A black and white map that's all one big dot of black is not, it's just not the thing to do. If we're going to communicate and do a public service, which we are public servants, we have to be better. So, that's that. That is a thing that makes me crazy, personally, being a public servant. Secondly, so, let's see. And I think sometimes when we have something this large, we might need to make a longer, better presentation that's a little more detailed. For people that aren't in this industry, and know this, or have looked at this, or, and it looks like we're just developing all that without any kind of infrastructure for sidewalks, and roadways, and bus stops. But for you who is concerned about that, and I totally get that, because as I look at that from somebody that hasn't been through this, you're right. It looks like we have no interconnectivity, and we do. I promise, that's just a, this is just a zoning type of map, so hang tight with us, because there are plenty of regulations in this code about how streets work, six-foot sidewalks, not just three. So, if you look at that, that's there. You did miss something. We have this thing on go about the comprehensive plan, and we've been promised by Alex before you got here, that in two months, we have the plan, the zoning code rewrite, and the...
Twenty-four months.
Twenty-four months?
Yes.
Two months, twenty-four. I've said two years in my head, months came out. Two years, twenty-four months, the zoning code rewrite, the housing strategy. So, there. You have a timeframe. Julia, you're not wrong. This is just one tool in the toolbox. How's it going to affect people? We don't know. This is the first time. This is one of those things where we have fear. And as I said in my opening thing, I have fear on a daily basis, every single time we have an SUP come through here. And yeah, we've got 101 feet byright, but we spotzone this city continuously with rezonings and PUDs and all the things. We just do, I believe. I don't know if we've got what's out there. So, for me, while it is not perfect, and we do need to work, and we're under this 100-day clock, so council, I'd hope you take a look at this, and get the draft that's showing the lines. We should never present a code to a planning commission or anybody that doesn't have what's marked out, and what's changed. We don't have time, and you know this, in the week that we get it, to be able to say, oh, yeah, this is the old one, oh, this is the new one. And so, it's just, that's, you should always give that to your planning body, so they know what's going on. So, I hope that our committee that works with these folks, that y'all redline these, and so you don't just go, here's the new code, because then we don't know what's changed. So, we need to do better at that. And I think, I'm going to, I'm going to talk about consistency again. Form-Based Code, it has been done. We have, we have, there are places out there where you can look at this. It doesn't just provide consistency for the folks who live there. It does provide consistency for some of the developers, when we get whatever it is right. Then the developers can come here and know. They're not going to sit here while we hash out and redesign their project to get their SUP done. So, I like that it does provide some consistency. And it provides consistency to the neighbors. Right now, you, where you live, I just found out I've got this place in my neighborhood. I have, that's sold. I have no idea what's going to happen. So, I get it. I live in that fear with you all, every day, living in the city, because I don't know what's going to happen. It's a crapshoot at this point. So, I also have some concerns about the map. Yes, the state code is changing. Who knows to what or where, but I still think with the state code changing, this could still be another tool in the toolbox. And I think when we had these conversations from our Form-Based Code folks that came before us, and again, Ginny, I've been with you through this entire journey, starting this Form-Based Code when we first got it presented. And when it was first presented to us, we had this long, beautiful linear park, all the way from the downtown area, all the way to, oh, Meadow Creek? No. Pollack's Branch. Pollack's Branch. And so, that's kind of, we were talking about daylight streams and all the things. So, what happens in the making of the sausage is, it looks like one thing when we start, and you may not get everything that happens once we get down to it. So, I'm a little bit disappointed about that beautiful linear park that goes from downtown to wherever it may have gone throughout our city, because daylighting the streams, we've done some of that in the city, and I think it's been awesome. But here we are, and maybe this is just a starting point. Historic structures, I think there are some definite things we need to take a look at and make some comments on to our council about these historic structures and these historic areas. I also did notice that, we call this the downtown extended Form-Based Code, and some of the areas that were brought up, if you look at the zoning, it is downtown extended for the most part, and you can, yeah, it's downtown extended for the most part, and that's maybe where we got rid of our long, beautiful linear park. But the area at Ninth, I don't know, Ninth and Avon, that's not, that's the downtown extended, but the parcel over isn't, that's not, or maybe it is. And then the area across Reed Street, which Ms. Keller talked about, is also not downtown extended. So, I'm not really sure why that was brought in here, but, you know, maybe somebody can tell me that. We did turn down 210 units of housing, folks, and what we got was a byright office. Hopefully, the crane will get back up. So, and then, I know, this is hard. We have hurry up, wait, back up, slow down. I mean, eventually, we're going to have to pull the plug on something, even the comprehensive plan. plan. And I stand by the statement I made in 2013, where if we had our zoning code fixed, we don't know if the comprehensive plan we have that's currently approved in 2013 works or not. We have no idea. We blame the comprehensive plan, but we don't know. I don't know, I'll stop there. I have a lot of thoughts about that.
Yeah, sorry, I'm not entirely organized here. I will say some random things that come to my head. They will probably not be all the things I wished I said. I completely 100% agree with what Lisa opened with there, which is that it was extremely hard to parse what changed between these plans, like what the differences were. Obviously, there were some that were highlighted in the staff report, but a diff version would have been incredibly useful. And I don't know what we need to do to make sure we get those in the future, make sure we have the right technology behind it, some sort of wiki, I don't know. But that makes it really hard to come up with good feedback to give here tonight. That said, I am pretty concerned overall about this whole idea of reducing the amount of housing that could potentially be built in the area, as much as I hate the fact that the area is currently zoned for an absolutely minimal amount of housing, especially given that it allows lots of buildings. So it forces extremely large apartments, or mostly office buildings, or entirely office buildings. A couple of technical points. In terms of like, current downtown extended zoning, I'm concerned about what happens to the remnants of that. It seems like we cover all of downtown extended except for the Market Street East area and the Hebrew Cemetery. So the Hebrew Cemetery will remain downtown extended zoning? Seems a little bit odd. Obviously, it's a cemetery and won't get redeveloped, so it's not the biggest deal. Seems like a strange choice, though. Another real concern that I have with the plan as proposed is we say we want form-based code so that we're not regulating uses so much. In our previous draft, we had a simplified use matrix that was at least a little bit less prescriptive, but now we've gotten rid of that and said, whatever's in downtown extended, that's what's available here, except that we have provision saying that like, retail's not permitted, except where it was in the SAA plan or the regulatory plan. It was essentially just Second Street Southeast, and I think maybe Monticello. I remember distinctly that one of the reasons we denied all that housing on, at Garrett and Fourth, was because the bottom floor didn't have retail and didn't address the street. But we prohibit retail in this plan, so I guess it would have to address the street, but without retail and without residential uses on the ground floor, which is sort of confusing to me. Curious about how that works. I would probably just recommend getting rid of that prohibition altogether. Similarly, on Grave Street, we have a lot zoned B two, I believe, right now. I'd like to see a better layout of how that changes the use matrix for that particular Think those are all the things I've got for right now. Probably hit you with some more later.
So my apologies for having to step out. My comments are with any zoning, you're always going to have consequences that are not foreseen or unintended. If you stay with your current by right, there will be consequences and realities that no one here expects, that they may or may not like. With form-based code, there will be unintended consequences, both, I think, for the good and for the bad. So just on a philosophical level, I think form-based code provides a matrix for whatever development may be happening, and it's across the board, and it's well-known, and there it is. So philosophically, I think it's, it is a better way to go than what we currently have. So the threat of inaction is worse than the threat of this form-based code, which has had more input, more of the, what I'll say, current professionalism of what it means to be a community that does planning and zoning. So I think it was done as well as we've done anything else, from what I've read. And I, so I think as you push this forward, we would do so pointing out some of the concerns about Garrick Street and Friendship Court, about the cemetery and sacred spaces and affordable housing. We identify those for our council and let them find the ways that they can respond to the public's concerns.
One of the things that I mentioned earlier in our pre-meeting was, because I too, as you know, have felt that we should not move forward until we finish our comprehensive plan and all of the other 50 million studies that we have going on. But after hearing today that it's going to take 24 months, equivalent of two years, before the comprehensive plan will come to fruition, waiting two years is probably not the best idea either. One of the questions that I did ask earlier was if we proceed with this form-based code as presented with some of the tweaks that we had in mind, and then we find that the person working on the comprehensive plan finds that there is a conflict, can we change this? And this document, or this, this plan is just like any other plan I was informed, and it can be tweaked, updated, and changed. I also did have some issue with the parcel on 310 Avon Street and the zoning of that as well. I think we had talked a lot about the T six zone right there, and noticed that it's all mostly just still T five.
We are in a housing crisis. That's fairly well-understood at this point. I love the intentions that I see here of doing something about that. I want to see that. Am I convinced that bonus heights for affordable homes are the best method to do that? Probably not. Will it help? Maybe, it might. Is downzoning a good idea in an affordable housing crisis? Probably not. I'm frankly unclear if we can fix this or not tonight. I think it'll be an interesting conversation.
So I'm convinced that the, this process has been thorough, it has been comprehensive, it has been long, and this is what a planning process should be. And I'm satisfied with the form-based code with some, a couple of issues that I have with it. One, the Graves Avenue, this, that north side of Graves Avenue, I believe, should be taken out of the transect area, the form-based code area, that's a map issue. It's a national and state historic registered landmark, and it has a particular individual characteristics that are different than the rest of the area. So I believe that should be taken out, and I also believe that in the narrative, there should be no setbacks less than 10 feet from principal buildings, so that we can have the kind of street amenities we need, trees and sidewalks. And those are my two major issues. I am concerned about other things that I heard during the public hearing, Piedmont Environmental discussing the courtyard sizes. So there's some things that I would like to add to that list of concerns, but beyond that, I think the form-based code is needed, and we need to move ahead.
The, a couple of things, what I want, I want to just express an opinion, and I want to talk about, you know, again, what we do to move forward, to make a recommendation. I did wrestle, wrestled mightily with the idea that we needed to wait until after we had a good firm comprehensive plan in place to move forward with this. But we can't stop development in Charlottesville for 24 months. Do we not do something like this until 24 months down the road? Do we not do New Hill? Do we not start working and thinking about New Hill? Do we put that on hold for 24 months? I just can't, don't think we can stand still that long. So I think we have to do something. Let's just get that out there. Once again, we need to make a recommendation on two different things. One is the ordinance, and the other is the map. Most of the objections that I think I'm hearing, most of them, there are a few that relate to the ordinance, especially the redlining thing, but most of the objections I'm hearing relate to what this is going to look like, where we're going to build things, what we're going to do with Grave Street, what we're going to do with Avon, and some of the preservation issues, what we're going to do with, with the fact that it's possible that, you know, edifices may tower over public housing properties, or edifices may tower over the Hebrew Cemetery. Those are all mapping issues that I think we can get to. So just want to throw that out there, so that you guys want to begin thinking about what's next. Keep in mind that we have two things that we have to make recommendations on, the ordinance and the map. So I give it back to you guys.
Just want to clarify on that 24-month timetable. So my understanding was that 24 months from this month is when we'll have the zoning ordinance done, which is, which means the comp plan should be done around a year from now. That's right? So if we defer this for...
We can't defer.
I know, that's, sorry. Not defer in the sense of us moving to defer, but if we were to recommend that council either deny it, or they can choose to give us more time, and we address this in the coming months, we should, given that the comp plan should be shaping up over the course of the next year, we should A, have an idea of what it's going to look like, which we already should, since it was mostly done a year ago, B, you know, it's not like, or a few months from now, or even nine months from now, is a significant portion of that one year till the comp plan is done, versus not a significant portion of the 24 months until the rezoning is done. And I think it makes a lot of sense to do it concurrently, or maybe just before the comprehensive rezoning, given that, I think, ideally, since there are a lot of good concepts in this idea of a form-based code, rather than a use-based code, I think hopefully that it will inform that process. And I think if we, the planning commission, deliberate over how it should actually look and how the text should be, we can take lessons out of it that can apply citywide, that will hopefully inform the zoning ordinance, if we actually have any input into that under this new process. I don't know.
So it's not two, 24 months, is not, I mean, 12?
Before we have a complete new zoning ordinance, which is what we will live by, it's 24 months. What Rory is suggesting is we'll have a concept within 12 to 18 months. Is that, yeah, so 12 to 18 months.
The concept should include, like, an adopted comp plan, from my understanding, from place last week.
Okay, this is all three different documents, okay? Three. It's the housing strategy, which, do you know which is coming first?
Yeah, would you, please?
The housing strategy, the comp plan, and the zoning rewrite.
The comprehensive plan and the affordable housing strategy are simultaneously, they probably get done first, probably at the end of this year, and then around January or February 2021, they begin the process of writing the, or writing the zoning ordinance, if you will.
And with all due respect, this is, we're saying now, we're acting like this is pretty definite. The steering committee has yet to meet, it's got 16 members on it, and we're establishing a schedule now that we're, we're just presuming they're going to meet, but...
Is there a schedule?
We have, yeah.
The schedule I'm talking about, it's, the schedule provided by the consultant.
So...
Okay, well, the planning commission had a schedule to get a comp plan done four years ago, too, and we saw where that went.
So for the public out there, be watching, because in 24 months, there's going to be a lot of meetings, if you want to be publicly engaged in this comp plan, housing strategy, and zoning code rewrite, right? They're going to reach out for public engagement?
During this quarter, I think.
Of course, there will be public engagement in between the process and the meetings between, the steering committee meetings. There will also be engagement with the planning commission and some work session with the city council, as well as briefing, ongoing briefing. So there will be a public engagement process.
Okay.
When will that start?
Well, we are starting with the, on 29th, the steering committee. So the consultant, we have to structure the public engagement process. I think they are creating a very robust public, community engagement process, you know...
Yeah, they're looking at a mid-March for their first...
Probably, yeah. So.
And Jody, was your implication that it'll probably stretch out longer, or that we could compress that timeline?
My implication is that there is no guarantee.
And a compression is highly unlikely, especially given the public engagement piece.
24 months, the law has been drawn.
I'm with Walt, two months.
We have, we have two items that we need to make a recommendation on. So let's focus on getting council recommendation on those two items.
Well, let's take one first. Which one, the map or the narrative?
Again, I think the ordinance, the narrative is easier. The map is where we have lots of questions. Gary?
Yeah, I'll give it a try. Can I borrow your glass? Oh, these don't work. Those don't work. I move recommendation approval of the zoning text amendment to Article VI of the Chapter 34 of the Code of the City of Charlottesville, 1990, as amended on the basis that changes would be served in the interest of the public necessity, convenience, general public welfare, and good zoning practices, with the following additions and modifications. That number one, the Graves Street area be reassessed?
Let me, let me ask you a question about that. You're, again, you're speaking to the text.
Yes, the text.
But the Graves Street concern is a mapping issue.
Yes.
So I would recommend that we get to the mapping issues in the next review. Although, is that, is that...
I thought that was a zoning text amendment.
Is it?
It's a zoning text.
The map doesn't denote Graves.
So can I just halt this motion for about two seconds? I know, I know, I'm killing you. But we had some conversation at Mr. LaHondra, about, so remove Graves Street from the map, and then no setbacks less than 10, so the no setbacks less than 10 feet for trees and sidewalks would be a zoning text, but the other would be the map. So I thought there were some other things, like contextual, some...
So why don't let Gary Green finish his motion, then you can amend it. So, but take out the Graves Street reference.
Yeah, then I'll, then I'll get back to the text, and then we'll do the map after that. Move to recommend the approval of the zoning text amendment, Article VI, Chapter 34 of the Code of the City of Charlottesville, on the basis that changes would serve the interest of the public necessity, convenience, general public welfare, and good zoning practices.
Is there a second? The motion dies. Is there an alternative motion?
Actually, I have a question for staff, if I may. It was described in public comment that there may have been some substantive changes to the text we're discussing that haven't been discussed yet by the public. What would those be? Is that, is that an accurate assessment? Is that, is that an accurate assessment?
So, just to put all those comments in context, when our office gives you the initial draft and subsequent provisions, we do our best to keep track of it using redlining, strikeout, give you a couple of things we're going on. The last time substantial public comment criticized the document because it looked like a draft. So he said, "We want it to look like closer to what it's going to be when it's completed." Second of all, the work that was done by the consultant was in a format that we couldn't manipulate. I couldn't just take the document. Quite frankly, there were some sections when I tried to manipulate them, it came up and said it wasn't working because the original document was written in Greek. So I, I retyped it, I tried to clean up the sentences. Brian Haleska and I worked together to address the issues that were clear everybody disliked, um, such as the whole section on signage, we didn't really feel like we need special provisions on signage, it was a distraction. We made it clear that we didn't want to focus on uses and the use table that we had. So Brian outlined the larger issues in completing sentences and trying to make things work. I'm sure there were some things, they were not intended to, um, be major departures, but for example, in one place in the document, um, as we flushed out the different, um, um, incentive bonuses that you could get, there were actually some numbers highlighted. So we inserted some provisions, some might be 10-year affordability or 10-year commitment periods, some might be 20, the affordable housing had it. So yes, there are some things different, um, but I apologize, probably what we should have done was give you a table that identified all of those changes and a RADA sheet or something like that, but I just ran out of time. I personally had to retype the whole document. So we ran out of time, um, but if there are changes, I'd encourage Ms. Long to send her list and share it with all of us, be happy to take a look at it. Um, she apparently has identified those changes and we can share that with you. Um, I'd also like, as long as, um, as long as I'm speaking, to clarify what I think is a significant, um, statement. So a lot of people are referring to this as a downzoning. I disagree that changing the heights per se is a downzoning. You look at intensity of use. And what people aren't giving credit for here is that this ordinance will eliminate all dwelling unit per acre restrictions and for single-family dwellings or other units that have lot size restrictions that effectively restrict how many homes can be built in a particular area, those will be gone. So whatever you're, you're, um, trading off in height, you are gaining, you are, have unrestricted, um, dwelling units per acre. So you all had asked us previously to prepare an answer to a fairly extensive list of questions, which we did. In answer to question number five, which we had shared with you prior to the December meeting, uh, we gave you an example. If you had a half-acre site under the current density restriction by right restriction of 21 dwelling units per acre, on that half-unit site in a four-story building, you could only have 10 or 11 apartments. You take away that density restriction, you increase the number of units you get. It is, it is an, it's not the entire accurate picture for people to say to you, you're getting fewer units if what you're trying to do is promote additional units. And as we discussed in the pre-meeting, getting rid of dwelling units per acre and, um, lot size restriction has been a hack recommendation for a number of years, both of those things. So, um, there are shades here, um, but our office fundamentally disagrees that the change in height per se is a downzoning.
Couple of questions. First off, do we have contract provisions for this comp plan and zoning, uh, RFP that we will get the document in an editable portable format with proper revision control?
At the kickoff meeting I attended and in the time allotted, I specifically said, "Our office will give you the format, you must use it. I want a Word document that at whatever point the consultants are gone and we're going through this process again, we can help you follow that document through to completion."
You're asking something else. You're asking about contractual that this will be done in 24 months?
No, 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 that, it's a editable document.
Oh, editable document, okay.
Edible?
Might have to be. Absolutely editable. And you mentioned lot size restrictions are gone in this, but aren't those governed by like Chapter 29 subdivision?
No, so if you look at the table at the beginning of this ordinance, we've, we've told you what things are being replaced, that's one of them.
Okay.
So we're getting rid of that.
And Rory, would you ask Lisa, too, about, or bring up again your issue about, um, the, uh, no commercial-
Yeah.
-use on the, on the ground floor?
Yeah, because actually, I can't find that anymore. Did we take that out?
I think so.
I, I think we did. So what we did with the elimination of the, the different uses for the different transects, we basically said that, um, any uses that were permitted in the downtown extended district, and that would extend anywhere that we have these new designations of DESIA, which is, has three sub-classifications. So in each of those three sub-classifications, you can have any use that's permitted in the downtown extended district. What I believe that we did, what, the previous version of the ordinance, um, essentially said you can only have retail in these locations. What, what I believe we did, if we need to tweak it, we will, but what our intention was, was to continue to allow retail throughout the area, but much like we have some current ordinance provisions in other places that say you can't have, for example, certain uses on the ground floor, you can't have ground floor residential. What this would still require is in a location where, um, um, the, the regulating plan says you have to have retail, you have to have retail, but that does not mean you can't have retail in other places.
Okay. And were there any uses that were in that matrix we previously reviewed that are not allowed in downtown extended?
No, so what we did in this district in the use section is we just included a simple statement, if it's currently allowed within the downtown extended zoning district, it'll be allowed in any of these colors of purple.
I mean, um, in the previous, before we did that, when we had that, the new use matrix, was anything in there allowed that isn't in the downtown extended?
No, those were condensed version of the-
No, but in, within, um, what that was doing is was taking the three transects and there were instances in which it would have been currently allowed in downtown extended and maybe it would have been allowed in T4 and 5, but not 3, so we got rid of that.
Okay. And then in B2, since we do have one parcel that is currently B2, are there any uses that are allowed there that aren't?
So if something is currently B2, it would now have all of the uses allowed in downtown extended. If, um, the other thing is, um, if it's R2, it would have those uses. Um, if you're focused exclusively on height, however, for example, in, uh, on the Grave Street location, in R2, you have a maximum height allowance of 35 feet, which isn't necessarily your typical two-story, one or two-story, uh, single-family dwelling that you see. 35 feet is pretty tall. Um, so, but that's already the height in the R2 district. So this may have impacts in terms of allowing new uses along Grave Street that wouldn't be allowed in R2, but it's not, um, that light-colored purple, um, already allows more than two stories on those, that, that line of, um, properties.
So to take it out, would it-
To take it out, we'll continue to restrict those uses to the uses typically in a low-density residential, so it's a, it, they'll have the same residential uses, but everyone needs to understand that in terms of height, um, remember a long time ago, we had this issue in the Rose Hill neighborhood where somebody came and introduced, uh, what, what they called a single-family dwelling, but it was much taller than what you would normally see. So that, um, it, everybody just needs to understand that if you're only looking at height, um, 35 feet of height are allowed in the R2 district, which is that line of light purple color there.
Any idea when the last time we reviewed the use matrix for downtown extended is? Like, I know, I know we've talked about how there is at least one use there, amateur radio antennas, that's illegal to ban under state code, but is banned in the use matrix.
So that is the type of thing that we're going to encourage the consultant do in the larger project. Nobody should believe that, um, if this goes forward, that you can't come back and, Ms. Green addressed this in the pre-meeting, you can always take a look at this. Another issue, and one of the reasons that staff, um, at a prior work session, I think, recommended that we not include additional areas of T6, is that in a form-based code, it's not like the zoning districts we've been using. You really want to make sure to study how your, you know, the implementation of the streets that work, the public spaces and the private spaces work together. It may be absolutely correct that T6 will work someplace else, but that's not what's been studied here. So our recommendation after a previous work session was that you, you absolutely consider that, maybe you want to do a charrette or something so that you can see examples of how that might work in another location. You're not stuck with this without the ability to amend it or add T6 to it at a later date. This is, um, this is a starting point.
Can I ask one quick typo question? And this went back to the, some of the public comments. In the middle, the big green area, the mandatory open space in the chart, it seems odd to me that that's not, uh, on page 11, uh, T6 under park there, a one-acre minimum? It's called T4?
Um, no, that, that doesn't seem right. So that, that green area is just intended to represent that a large, uh, open space of some type is, is associated. If, if you assume that T6 is that entire rectangle around it.
Right.
In the T6, um, um, buildings are required to have a certain area in front of, along each frontage-
Right.
-that is, um, open.
Right.
And so that area is intended to represent that if there are built, T, uh, T6, um, buildings on each of those frontages, by the time you put all those required frontages together, you've got an open space in the middle. But you may want to recommend to council that they study the, um, the comments that people have brought about, um, you know, identifying the specific categories of open space that should be available for that area if that is to be, um, sort of the implementation of what the original SIA plan, uh, called for, which was a, a green park.
So that particular mandatory open space is not listed in this chart on page 11?
Brian may have to help me with, with that. I think we have to go and look at the T6 regulations and whether they specify, let me get to the ordinance, whether they specify what the-
Because that's the open space type chart.
Yeah, but we may have to look at the T6 regulations for what types of open space go with the taller buildings. See what page that's on.
That's on page 18.
It's on page 18.
So the specified spaces are, uh, frontage yard types are urban, pedestrian forecourt, and vehicular forecourt. So, um, if the, the preferred, um, configuration is, um, open green space, we would need to look at that as well as the, um, um, the plan that's earlier in the code that, that identifies the mandatory, uh, space. Can't remember what page that's on, um, Brian, that it's not the regulating plan, it's called the framework plan.
Framework plan, yeah.
That's on page-
It's page 14. But it didn't give a size either.
And that calls it open space. So I think the comments were well taken. We need to reconcile the reference to open space with the, the T6 regulations reference to frontage yard types and make sure that everybody will understand what specifically that space can be.
In size.
In size.
Yeah, there's, I mean, I did, what, what Travis from the SCLC did say was, you know, the, the public accessible courtyards, that's noted in 2.43, so that's where he's pulling that. I think to your point with the framework plan, the page, the, the, the table on page 11 ex, limits them to the square or plaza type because those are permitted in T6. The other ones are options for, or the, the mid-block passage isn't mentioned in 2.43, so that's not one of them. So I think square, plaza are the open space types that are, that would satisfy the requirement that you see in that framework plan.
Say that one more time?
Just the, the square and the plaza, type C top and type D on page 11.
Yeah.
That's how I read that, is that these, because the framework plan specifically calls out that area as mandatory open space per Section 2.41, um, either as mandatory as a general approximate, so they've, they've got to adhere to that. And then when you go to the type of design that they have to use for that space, over on page 11, you've got the square and the plaza as the two options.
But that's only a .2-acre minimum.
Right, but the framework plan says you've got this area.
Okay.
Yeah. You can't, you couldn't use a square, T5, T4, you know, T4, T5, and T6 all allow for a square, but if you can't meet that two-acre minimum, you're not doing a square.
But the framework plan outlines the boundaries of the mandatory space.
Got it, got it, okay, okay.
I've got another specific technical question. Section 6.2.6.3, uh, references the average story height according to Section 6.1.3. Again, that's 6.2.6.3 on page 27, references Section 6.1.3, which is on the previous page, 26. 6.1.3 talks about what counts as a building story, but not about the maximum story height. Where is maximum story height specified? I, I can't find it.
I believe it's in the, um, in the specifications for the-
It, it gives you-
Each of the districts.
Oh, yeah.
I had that earlier.
Figure?
It, um, no. Where are they? No, I had it earlier, because someone else had the same question.
There are charts, one for each of T4, 5, and 6, and those are on, I just had them a second ago.
Eight, page eight.
So while you guys are doing that, I'm, I'm going to let us do this for a little while longer, but we don't want this to be a work session. We act, we have to get a recommendation, it may be to deny, but we deny what these things that need to be fixed, but we have to get a recommendation to council tonight, um, one way or the other, on both, uh, both applications.
I believe I have a motion.
Okay, uh, let me, let me, let, let's, let them do what they're going to do.
Yeah, I've got it. It's, it's right under where, where we were speaking of. It starts at 6.2.4, .1.4 and goes for each of the transects. It gives the, uh, maximum heights for each of the stories.
So let's jot that section reference change down on whatever resolution we make. Can I make a motion?
Wait, wait, someone's already asked to make a motion.
Oh, sorry.
I say as I can't remember where, one moment. I'm sorry, I'll get it. I move to recommend denial of the zoning text amendment to Article 6 of Chapter 34 of the Code of the City of Charlottesville, 1990, as amended.
The text?
Yeah, use the-
The text.
Deny the text, yes. Is there a second?
Just a quick point of order, were we expected to make commentary as part of that motion of, for denial?
Well, I, I think what we'll do is, uh, we'll- Well, I, I think what we'll do is, we'll have a second if there is one, and then we'll chat about it.
And just to clarify, your obligation is to report back and to make recommendations. Usually, you recommend, approve, or deny, but you simply have to give a report back. So, if you choose not to say one or the other, you just, you make a report, you can say what you don't like, you can say what needs more work, make recommendations, whatever they are, but the obligations are recommendations within a report.
And how would we format that?
The way that you're doing it, you should come to consensus about what things, many times tonight, people have stated, I'm, I'm generally in favor of either this form-based code or form-based code generally. If you have consensus about a general opinion, but you're not ready to recommend approval because you think there are categories of things that need more work, you could report back exactly that and identify those things that you'd like to see.
So, what I think I'd like to do is what we did with the CIP, so, allows me to motion to deny, and I think what we maybe then want to do is make amendments to the motion saying, these are the, these are the deficiencies that need to be corrected before we, it can be moved forward.
Need a second.
Point of order, Chair, he doesn't have a second.
Yeah, I'm just, yeah, I'll get there in a minute, but Jesse K., Jesse K.'s one drop, drop manna from heaven, it just happens.
Look, can I make a suggestion to the Chair?
Please.
So, before we have a motion, and maybe this one's dead since it's been so long, but before we have a motion, maybe what, the, the thing to do is to poll everyone about, and we did that, poll everyone, what are, what are your concerns? Go with the text first, we write them down, and we get a head nod of, yes, that's a point of concern of everyone's or not, and then we have a list to give to council. Because whether we sit up here and make these grandiose motions of approval and denial, these guys still have to have, they still have to know what we're either happy with or not happy with.
The, that'll work well for me. All I want to do is get council recommendations. So, there's a motion on the table. Is there a second? The motion has died. Okay.
Chair.
So, I, I have a question too.
There were a list of questions that we were supposed to address as far as, and I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time finding, but I think that, no.
No, it's in staff report.
It was a list of about six questions that we were supposed to address, like, did we feel like, and maybe this only pertaining to the map, and I could have sworn it was kind of, the questions would make sense.
Page three?
No, and I'll find it in a second. What I was going to recommend is that maybe that's a good starting point, that we go through those questions as soon as I find them. In the standard of review, that's exactly what it was, maybe, I think. And then, if we could poll those questions, then that may help speed up this process.
I think this is a good idea, so, here's my recommendation. I'm going to have you begin by reading the questions, and then we'll chat about them, and then we'll go, as Lisa has, Chair Meredith Green has suggested, is we'll go through the, we'll go one by one through all the commissioners and get consensus on the other issues that we've got concerned.
I got a new pad.
So, Ms. Dowell?
Hold on, so, what Laura pulled up was pretty much was in the report, like, on the main page of today's report. The questions that I'm looking for, it may take me a second, hold on, 10,000 pages pulled up.
The work session?
Yes, but it was after the work session. And I feel like we didn't address, like, those direct, I mean, a few of them, the public did, but we as a body did not address the answers to those questions. I just had it pulled up, sorry.
So, while we're still struggling with bringing a motion to send to council, judging from some of the input from the staff about the text and some of the inadequacies, is, is it still a staff recommendation that approval is the best thing?
I thought it was more important.
Well, I think it's helpful for the council to know what the staff recommends, and that's what we were operating on.
Hey, I'm a little uncomfortable putting staff on the spot. I think we should accept staff's recommendation as their recommendation, as opposed to putting them on the spot like now without having a chance to huddle amongst themselves first.
Sorry, guys, I can't.
Right, so, while you're looking, why don't we go ahead and follow Ms. Green's recommendation and begin walking through the issues that, that we like council to get butt to. So, Ms. Green, would you like to begin?
Okay, we're only speaking of the code.
We're now.
Okay. Well, not the map, that's what I'm...
We're talking about this.
The code.
Yeah.
Yes, text, whatever. So, I do, I would think that...
And let's take them one by one, so, once you get it out, we'll chat about it.
Okay, I do think that we need some contextualizing language around those historic districts to know how to address those, and specifically, the cemetery. And, so, there are some other contributing structures along East-South Street and Levy that are a part of the historic, and how would we address those?
That's one.
That's one.
Any questions or concerns about that? I think, does that address the issue you had, Jody?
Well, no, because the, one of the stated concerns during the public hearing was, did the architectural review district, control district of historic districts over, did that, was that not being recognized by this form-based code? And I heard from staff that it's not, it wasn't brought up because there is no change. That architectural design control district that BAR has to review proposed development and then, still stands, and so, it still has to go through. So, I'm, I'm satisfied with staff's...
You're satisfied with the historic around South End?
Yeah, the only, the only issue I had with historic preservation is the north side of Grave Street.
But not around the cemetery?
Well, yes, the cemetery also.
Okay.
Ooh, there are two things, and it's Grave Street and the cemetery, right?
Right.
Any concerns with that? Okay, Ms. Creasy, do you have that?
Mm-hmm, y'all don't want to add in Ridge?
No, Ridge is protected still by the BAR and the normal reviews.
The process is still in place.
Belmont ADC, right?
No.
But it's protected by BAR, so...
I don't know why we have Ridge Street in there, but the, the west side of Ridge Street, and that's what I was going to address with the map, so...
We're still on the text.
I mean, okay.
Still with map.
All right, what's next?
But see, right now, we don't have a local AD, architectural design control district for the north side of Grave Street. That is not a local historic district, it's a national historic district, but it's not recognized by the city.
Which is the reason you want that, you want that culled out, yeah. So, cemetery, Grave Street.
So, let's take this two at a time, let me try to make this, this wording better. So, number one would be, provide some type of protection around the cemetery.
Yes.
What, we don't know, we'll have to study that. Is that good? Protection around the cemetery. And then, would you like to help me with the wording?
My, my recommendation, recommendation is to remove the north side of Grave Street, the light purple, from the map.
Okay, so, that's a map thing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Diana, let's just grab it.
But, in the event that doesn't happen, is there any protection language that you? I don't know this historic protection language.
Yeah, and isn't it just ensure that the process that is currently in place is followed?
There is no process currently in place for the north side of Grave Street.
There is no process, okay.
Here, just take it off the map.
Yes.
I mean, that's out of it, move it, delete from the map.
Okay, so, um, God.
All right, you got that?
Yeah, I've noted, number one, protection of the cemetery, that is, that's a text and a map, potentially. And then, remove Grave Street from map, and that's a map.
Any issues with that?
No.
Let us have a question.
Yep.
How do you protect the cemetery?
Well, you'd have to have some type of buffers or do some kind of transition areas so that the height or not around, specifically around the cemetery would not be in detriment. I mean, you don't want to, right now, that would be a zero lot line right up to the cemetery. Well, actually, no, right now, we actually do have a zero lot line right up next to the cemetery, so this would provide further protection.
Okay.
And I would, I don't want to put a number on that, I think that, that's something...
That's, they can figure that out.
Yeah.
That's the detail.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay.
Next, that's wrong.
God, I wasn't ready for this, but...
It was your idea, buddy.
I know, well, it's trying to get us through this.
Can I throw one in there?
Do you, two, maybe even three laps, so everyone can get their stuff. Because I know I'm not going to get all my things.
Grab it, grab it, so let, let...
And I just thought, if we're done with, with the first recommendation, and the other recommendation is that the affordable housing bonus matrix and algorithms are made crystal clear so that development can have a precise idea of the cost to meet those, and, and that's really important, that, that it's not a Morpheus thing, if you're going to plan to do something, you need to know what it's going to cost you.
And if I may propose something more specific on that, like, it seems pretty obvious to me that we should change it to square foot, square feet of these bonus floors instead of units, which is this nebulous concept that doesn't really mean anything.
Thank you, that's, that's kind of...
All right, put it in words.
Bonus affordable housing should be as a percentage of square footage, bonus square footage rather than bonus units.
I like that.
Right, right.
You guys are... Got it, next.
Is, still Gary's turn?
So, I brought up the affordable housing bonus, and you perfected it with the square footage.
Along those lines, I can't remember, I think, the rules similar to the, the standard operating procedures for affordable housing units, that housing units need to be of the same type and size of the market rate ones.
That's, that's right in there.
So, I'm not sure that makes a ton of sense. If you have a penthouse unit that's 10,000 square feet, I don't think that means you should have the affordable housing units be 10,000 square feet, I think it means you should make 10,000 square foot.
Let me, let me give a floor to Ms. Robertson.
No, we addressed that, it said exclusive of 1.6.2.3. We, we said that the affordable units should be similar, of a size, similar to the market rate units within the building, provided that affordable may be the smallest size of each market rate type and will have no luxury scaled unit counterpart. So, we can clarify that, but we absolutely intended to say that they're not going to be the same exact size, and they're not, you can't, it's not the penthouse equivalent.
But I'm not sure I can calculate that.
I don't know what luxury scaled is, it seems like a nebulous term to name, but clarification, I think, is a good idea there.
Can I add one quick thing?
Please.
And I don't know how we do this, so, in the beginning of this, and I knew I had seen it, so, I found it finally with all the words, the steering committee for this SIA plan adopted some following principles for the plan, and I think this is hugely important for our community, because we've heard this, and I don't know if we can add this to the beginning of this, as some kind of memorialized statement, so that this is in the beginning, and I didn't see it, so maybe if it's in here somewhere, I don't know, but specifically, number five says, honor our CRHA Residence Bill of Rights and rebuild and preserve existing public and assisted housing as part of an overall plan to revitalize the area. The SIA will work in concert with the CRHA redevelopment plan and is not, and not supersede or replace it. Can we add that statement in there?
So, we, when the, a formal ordinance that would get adopted would have a bunch of whereas causes, that's not really a zoning regulation, but it's absolutely something, so, you implement your comprehensive plan a number of different ways. So, we want to make sure that in any funding agreements with these entities or with any, any related approvals that we get, that we make sure that we're getting that Bill of Rights implemented. We can certainly reference in the introduction to a formal ordinance that, that is there. If you have specific ordinance provisions that you think are not implementing that, we can tweak them, but it's, you know, the CRHA Development, as well as Friendship Court, are, you know, they're both 100% affordable housing, or mostly affordable housing.
What I don't want to get lost in, these, these actual, all six of them are extremely important to what we're hearing. Promote mixed income residential development without displacing current residents. I mean, a lot of this is, so, what I don't want to have happen is us get down the road and us go, well, we didn't talk about that, we didn't put that in, but, I mean, I think this should be at the beginning, and I understand the code part.
We can, we can reference it, but I just want everyone to understand that no displacement is not a zoning regulation that can be enforced through this ordinance, but we can, we can state in the ordinance that together with other measures that the city may have at its disposal, such as providing funding for specific things, that we will make sure that that promise gets implemented.
So, if I could maybe add a specific suggestion to that concept? The purpose section of the proposed zoning ordinance is very skimpy compared to most of our zoning ordinance purpose sections.
That's what I was...
It says, like, to implement the SIA plan, whereas, like, you know, like, the McIntyre fifth one is like, the purpose is to encourage redevelopment in the form of medium density, multifamily residential uses in a manner that will complement blah, 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 blah. So, fleshing out that purpose section with reference to those goals, I think, would make sense.
We'll work on something for you. It's another one of those things where there are very specific statutory purposes of zoning ordinances, and we have to be careful.
I understand.
But, in relation to the reference to implementing the SIA plan, we can, we can accommodate that.
Is, are you all in agreement with these? Have you read these?
Yeah, absolutely.
It was on page two?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Creasy, do you have that? I don't know how we put that in there. I know that it's not standard code language, but I think it's important.
Yeah, and again, that, what you have is the text, but it requires a more formal structured ordinance to implement it, and that will have references to purposes and that sort of thing.
You need a reference page number?
No, I've got it, I've got a review purpose section of form-based code to address principles of SIA as applicable.
As adopted.
As adopted.
It was adopted 2013.
All right, you were on rule, what else you got?
Uh, let's see, okay, so, we went over the unit square foot thing, I've got a controversial one. So, in regards to reducing heights as a maximum, we've heard a bunch of concern that if you reduce heights, you're reducing the overall quantity of housing. Obviously, it's not as, it's a little bit more nuanced than just a down zoning, because we are getting rid of the density restrictions. What I would propose is that if we believe that heights should be lower in various areas, which areas I won't address, because that's the map part, we're not through that, then we should do that by implementing a requirement for more affordable units as part of bonuses that get you that excess height, so that the impacts, supposed impacts of a seventh story in a T5 are offset by making that bonus height perhaps 25% affordable, so that rather than setting these strict limits that are lower than our existing allowed amount, we instead ramp up the requirements so that we get more for these supposed impacts of height.
So, you're talking about changing the percentage provided by the consultants in this chart?
I think what I'm proposing is that for the bonus stories allowed in this chart, leave it as is, and then for additional bonus stories above allowed there, have a more owners percentage. So, rather than in T5, a strict cap at four plus two bonus stories with 10 to 15% affordable, 10% affordable, then you say for that seventh story, which wouldn't be allowed under this, in... instead of 10%, it'll be 15%. And then for the eighth story, it'll be 20%. Well, we got rid of the 60. Oh, we just got rid of the 80?
Yeah, we got rid of the 80.
Okay, so same concept. Um, so here, T5, four stories by right, plus two stories for either 10% at 50 or 15% at 60% of AMI. Then I'm saying instead of that hard cap at six stories, we allow a seventh or an eighth story up to a ninth story, maybe even more. Um, but with stricter requirements than these, perhaps double what we have here.
I'm not following. So why doesn't, why doesn't a T5 then just become T6?
Uh, well, because you still, you, you still wouldn't be able to reach that height without stricter requirements. So for T6, we give you four stories by right, and you can have four stories with the, the 10 or 15%. Um, but then you're capped at nine. For T6, I would maybe suggest that you could have a 10th story if 20% of that were affordable. So that if you're allowing more height, which, uh, we're saying has an adverse impact, and that's why we're restricting it, uh, you can offset that by giving us things that have a beneficial impact. Um, so it's not that it, it would be the same as T6, but that if you wanted to go that high, the requirements, uh, for the bonus are stricter. That was, we get more out of it, uh, in order to give you that bonus.
So let me, let me, let me put this in more layman's terms and, and try this, and I think it will have everybody glaze over. So you want a developer to put another story, we don't want to cap it, seven stories, and the developer's going to give us even more affordable units?
Of that seventh story, yeah.
Of just the seventh story?
Um, yeah, I'd say for the first six, because they did the economic analysis on that, leave it like it is. And then for the seventh or above, then it's stricter.
So then those affordable housing units can only be on the seventh floor?
Uh, no, so for the, for the fifth and sixth floors, you'd still have the same requirements as in this chart. But if you wanted to put a seventh floor on, of that extra bonus, so say you get an extra 10,000 square feet to put on a seventh floor, um, then the requirement will be more than the 10 or 15, depending on AMI that we require here.
Well, wouldn't that turn it into a different transit?
Yes.
Wouldn't that take a T5 to a T6?
That's what I was.
Yes, that's what we should do.
I'm saying within the, the existing transects, because all the requirements of that transect would be the same, um, even within this bonus structure. Uh, to get six stories, if that's what you wanted, it would be the same as currently proposed. But then if you really, really thought that a seventh story was going to make you that much extra money, um, then you could give us, uh, even more extra, um, than we're mandating here.
But it's going to cost them more to build that seventh story, and they have to put in additional parking, which costs them more.
Maybe it's true that, uh, we'll make it so strict that it won't ever be worth doing. Um, in which case, you've done exactly the same thing as prohibiting it. Um, but if it's a million dollar condos up there and it's worth it regardless, um, then, uh, you know, we, if we're going to get a bunch of extra affordable units out of it, that seems like it makes sense.
I think you are complexifying this, and I, I think it's, uh, complexified to the point that it just doesn't make sense.
So I'd argue it's no more complex than a progressive tax code, uh, where you get taxed a higher percentage of your income at the higher brackets.
Yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm not going to.
I'm not in favor of that, but.
Can I suggest a, a simpler idea? Greater heights in T6.
I'm not going to support that either. You say you're going to get 10 stories?
Actually, I would suggest 12. It would be very economical. We'd get more housing.
I'm not going to support that.
So I think what Roy is saying is very much in, in line with the idea that development happens, but only if a developer has a very accurate picture. And he, and what we have now doesn't give them a picture for what, if they want to go higher.
They can't. That's the picture.
And that's, that's the point, is set, putting restrictions, putting restrictions as opposed to formulas that meet our goals in exchange for.
But we're trying to meet all the housing goals in this tiny little spot, and we've got to use this as one tool, not the whole shebang.
And prohibition is not the best tool.
And this is not prohibition.
I definitely don't think we should be trying to meet it all in this one spot. Um, I'm just saying that if there is more square footage that is economically viable at an upper, at a higher floor that we would be prohibiting, um, then maybe we should allow it if we get even more benefits than currently allowed.
I guess my question too is, didn't we already, and not to be condescending, but I'm just trying to get to a, a continuing point. I could have sworn before we even came up, um, with the three different sections we have now, we didn't want additional height, hence as to why we only have, our highest height level is the T6 zone.
There has been a lot of work done on the cost efficiency of the heights that we have in place now. And that's the only thing I'll say about that. If you want to have council study that, I don't, again, this is what I said in pre-meeting, we can't design this and rewrite this code. We need to offer suggestions.
Let me offer maybe an extreme version of the proposal to maybe, maybe make it, uh, more obvious, right? So what if you said in T6, you could build a 10th story if it was 100% affordable? Um, would that make sense? Like, if they were, maybe you'd say they'll never do it, so it's, doesn't matter. In which case, it's no different from what we have in front of us. But if they did do it, then we get a whole extra story full of affordable housing, right?
I just, I don't see the economics here. I'm not sure.
100% is probably not going to work, but 50% maybe, because you get an extra floor and people will pay for views. A lot of the feedback we've heard against height, uh, has been from people in a certain, uh, building built in the last 15 years that doesn't want people to block their views.
We are, we are getting bogged down. So why don't you articulate the, uh, proposal, and then we can see if we have consensus. If we do, we'll embrace it. If we don't, we'll move on. So articulate your, your, articulate your, your practical proposal.
Um, I would, all right, so I would say, um, in T5 and T6, you would allow an extra three stories if the bonus square footage on those stories was at least 25% affordable.
That sounds like a special.
Okay, so let me.
Still by right, as long as you give it.
Hang on, one second. So poll, and let's see what we got.
Yeah, thank you. So any, any concerns with, um, any concerns with that, Jody?
I can't support that. I don't want eight-story buildings across the street from these residential.
Wow.
With map changes, I could support it.
Yeah.
Hmm, not as sustained.
Gary.
With the map changes, I could support it.
Well, I know your answer, uh, and I will not support it. So what to count, let me see.
Four. Four, three.
Four against.
Four.
Okay, next.
Uh, all right, a couple, a couple smaller things, less controversial maybe.
And not that I don't think that this is very important, but once again, we're having a work session on the dais.
Right, I agree.
We've already made a decision that we're not voting up or down, and that we're going to make recommendations. Can we make a recommendation that we'll email all of our recommendations and hot points to council?
But the, the council's not going to know what the consensus is of.
What we've already done is we've had two motions die, one to approve and one to deny.
Right.
Well, if we could just avoid the pontification and just make your point, and then let's, let's, let's get consensus, that'd be great. Let's, let's stop pontificating. Let's just get the points out.
Yeah, uh, well, so I would also argue, ask council to give us extra time, which they can do. That 100-day requirement is only them. So we, we said we wanted a work session last time. We should have an actual work session. Uh, things that don't like, sides of awnings are banned.
Are you just throwing that out there?
Uh, sides of awnings are banned when you're walking along the.
Are you proposing or not?
What?
The 100-day extension.
Uh, yeah.
Well, we, we.
No, 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 not a extra 100 days, just time to have a work session, to waive the 100-day rule.
Okay, so you want to vote on that?
So the 100-day rule is in state code.
Okay.
It's not council. It's a couple of things.
Well, they can send it back to us.
100 days, 1,000 days. You can sit us in a room for eight hours, none of us want to sit and listen.
We just don't. I don't want you to design it. That's why we paid $600,000.
And then they gave us a document.
So that's on council to decide. What, what's your next, okay, move on.
Uh, I think it should be legal to have a side on your awning, uh, when you're walking along the sidewalk, the side of the awning. And when I'm walking along Water Street, you see CVS on the side of the awning. That's useful for pedestrians. Only allowing tops of awnings and not signs means only cars get to see the signs. That's dumb.
Well, wait, okay, I don't have any hard part with that.
Yeah, I can give you the section.
I'll give you one.
Uh.
You got, you got, just give, um.
Yeah, I'll find the section for you. At 7.8.2. something. Uh, let's see.
Ms. Neeser.
Slow down.
Ms. Neeser, second.
An inside voice would be helpful too.
7.8.2.7. Uh, let's see, sandwich sign took gum in this draft. Uh, there was three-foot clearing. Um.
You know, they took signs out of this.
All signs, oh, including sandwich signs. All right, all right. Okay, that makes sense. Well, that's gone then. Uh, okay, 8.6.2.3.1.1. We require pedestrian access with a minimum center line spacing of 300 feet. I think what they're saying is you want at least that much access, in which case it should be a maximum difference or separation of 300 feet.
Don't our streets that work plan kick in in this?
Uh, this is specifically to off-street parking, so I don't know, probably.
So wait a second, you want a maximum of three, I mean, a maximum or a minimum?
I think that's what it's supposed to mean. I think when they say minimum, you, they're mean you have to have a minimum of that amount of access, but the phrasing of it doesn't make any sense. Um, this is the sort of thing I'd love to address in a work session and not on the dais.
Yeah.
Uh, skipping over that, you guys can just take a look and see if you think that's what it means. I don't think it's worthwhile for us to talk about it or argue over it. 8.3.2.1.4. It's illegal to have a bike rack near a tree planter. I don't understand why. We good on that? Do you guys want to talk about that? I think it's fine. Uh, lastly, uh, this.
Let Ms. Neeser catch up, but she's got, this has got in the document, so we can forward it to count.
Okay.
Right, I'm looking for the bike.
8.5.
What page are you on?
That guy. This one.
Bike racks can't be located within two feet of any utility meter or tree planter.
Just so you can use it.
The tree planter?
The bike rack.
Enough separation around it.
I mean, there are people that do this for a living, that have come up with these, and I realize you've got a lot of data.
The people who did it for a living gave us an uneditable document for $600,000.
Guess what? They weren't in our menu code, but there are people that do this for a living. And I know you want to pick this thing apart, but this has been vetted with $600,000 professional services.
Lastly, uh, that's kind of a big one. Uh, this whole draft no longer has a chapter 10, which is the parking requirements. There are references to parking requirements in other chapters. Uh, the top thing that says this replaces this, whatever, um, talks about there being a chapter 10, uh, just not in this.
We need to edit that out. There are still some parking references in here, but you all, um, had some concerns at your previous meetings, and we thought that overall parking issues could be left to the larger planning process underway. And that only, um, there are still some, like in, um, there's still some bicycle parking requirements. There's still some standards for, um, constructing and locating onsite parking and that sort of thing. But the overall, the larger, um, section on parking was eliminated because you all didn't seem to have a consensus. You didn't, you really didn't like it.
Okay, then I guess we can just change that in the top bit. I don't even know if that's part of the code. Table 1.2.
If we didn't edit that out, some other place in the document, we'll edit out reference to section 10.
That's all I got for right now.
And where was that?
Uh, table 1.2 under Article 9 generally applicable.
Okay. Reverend, anything else beyond, beyond that?
I think the, the two concerns are the historic and the affordable housing bonus matrix.
Yeah, and I think we've got that.
That's it.
Definitely the affordable housing bonus matrix. And then, um, I'm absolutely for making sure that, um, the graveyard is protected. Is that, would that be covered in the map? But I think Lisa covered that.
Yeah, she did. Well, she did, but, um, Ms. Creasy is also documented to be covered in the map as well.
And then my only other questions, um, not my only other questions, but my major concerns for this evening will be with the map, not the test.
Got it, good.
My main concern remaining, I, I've spoken it briefly before, but I'd like to talk about it a little bit more. Um, because I don't, I don't think I'm being understood. All this is for nothing if nobody builds anything. Um, it's a lot of planning for, for nothing. We, we want someone to play our game. If no one plays our game, we wasted a lot of time and money, $600,000. If we give more to play our game, someone might want to play along. So my suggestion is that we give more, um, that we give more height. Um, I'm not saying at the edges, I'm saying at the core, where it will do the most good and do the least damage. That makes sense to me. That's T6. I think there should be more height in T6.
Let me poll the board. Um, more height in T6, Ms. Green.
I think arbitrarily making that statement without having this thing vetted out and knowing where those, those construction and, and, uh, what am I trying, and I was just looking this up. Uh, value, I mean, construction costs and, and where, where those sweet spots are. I would be uncomfortable supporting that. I'm not uncomfortable supporting it in, in certain areas, but we are hearing from our public, our residents and places that, you know, like, what does this mean for me? Right? And what does this mean for my neighborhood? And what does this mean for, you know, the folks who already live here? And so we have had these conversations, uh, and this has been vetted in a thorough. I know that many of you were not on this planning commission, but this has been vetted in a very thorough community engagement now. Now we're here to vote, and, and we've, we're not, we're forgetting that, but I would be uncomfortable supporting that without some type of cost analysis on where that sweet spot is and what we get, and that, that kind of thing. That's where I am with that.
So I think you're suggesting that.
No.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Rory.
Um, I would strongly support that. Um, if I may, I have extensively reviewed the bonus height analysis we paid the consultants a bunch of money for, um, and they made it clear that there are these cliffs where you move to a different construction method. But once you're above six stories, you're concrete and steel no matter what. That's what the building code requires. Once you're at that point, adding one more story doesn't change your construction method and make your lower stories more expensive. That means everything that you only have one of in the building, or one set of, an elevator, stairs, a roof, um, all of those things are fixed. A foundation, uh, probably the money you're paying to the architect roughly. Um, that means that if you add an extra floor on top, it is cheaper to build that extra unit than the average cost of each of the units below it. Because of that, um, it's more economically viable. It's more profitable to build that unit. Because again, you're, it's cheaper, you're actually probably making more revenue from it because it's higher. Um, as such, uh, we should be getting the maximum amount of affordable units out of it.
Would it be because it's higher, or you have more units available to maximize your profit?
Uh, it's both. Um, I'd say even for that specific unit, uh, the, so overall, of course, you make more money total-wise because you have more. Um, but even that specific one, you know, you can sell a seventh floor condo for more than a six-floor condo.
Okay.
Um, so the top floors are where we get the affordable units. Really trust that.
You're, you're repeating yourself. We're, we're here to make.
He's in favor of.
He's in favor.
I'm not in favor of the extending the T6. I'm in favor of the affordable housing bonus matrix encouraging going higher. But I don't think the, the shifting of T6, so I would not go with that.
I thought those were the same thing.
Do you mean, do you mean the base level T6 or the bonus level?
He suggested that we just.
T6.
My intent was to extend the bonus to up to, up to 12 feet, uh, 12, uh, stories.
Um, man, you're a yes, of course, loud, Mr. Landry.
Um, yeah, I'm willing to support that in the T6, um, area. Support the council looking closer at that.
And I will vote no.
So the T6, guys, is right next to the cemetery, which you all want to preserve.
Right, right.
Well, but we've covered that.
We have a vote, and the vote is, um, three to four, four to deny. So, next.
That's my big one, thank you.
Oh, I'm, um, what's your name? Jody.
Um, the, the one, uh, remaining issue for me is that I would like to see setbacks for the front, um, and corner, uh, sides, uh, of buildings have, be no less than 10 feet.
Would you read that? Let me visualize.
The setbacks for the front and corner sides of buildings in all three transects, be no less than 10 feet.
Okay, that's setbacks.
Uh, I oppose.
Quick question about that. Doesn't that cover?
Doesn't that cover, do, are streets at work planned, doesn't it already cover that to have those trees planted without having that setback?
I mean, there, there are some transects that, uh, allow no setbacks in...
So, so, just, that work does call for some, some trees to be planted within the right-of-way itself as opposed to all being constructed on the, the private side of things.
Yeah, but, um, so, so what he's noting is, uh, it wouldn't change T4, but T5 and T6 would have, um, you know, would potentially, would change quite a bit from the setback standpoint.
I mean, that gives me, that, that means they're smaller buildings.
Yeah, so that means we lose housing on two sides.
So, but I go back to, I go back to the, the plan that we just approved, that everybody loved and we had the best community engagement in the history of what we've done on South First Street, right? And, and folks in that neighborhood are like, we want trees and we want, you know, all the things. So are you saying, Jody, you think there won't be any trees without any of these changes setback?
Uh, I'm saying that I would like to be sure we have the trees on South First Street. That was a particular situation where the, uh, right-of-way had generous, uh, property between the, uh, line and the curb. So there a five-foot, um, setback, um, worked, still being able to get canopy trees along South First Street.
But like Kathy said, under these rules and streets that work, we're no longer going to have narrow streets. So we now have big wide right-of-way.
If we have the right-of-way.
Right, right, if we have the right-of-way. We're not purchasing right-of-way.
Yeah, well, there'll be some of your streets here, right?
So, um, Rory, you're a no. Lisa, you're a...
I'm a, I don't know. But...
Uh, I'll come back to you.
Yeah.
Of course, you're a yes, uh, Lyle?
No.
Lyle's a no, uh, T...
Yeah. Um, just a question.
Setbacks.
10-foot minimum setbacks at all lots.
Um, all alone or just one of them?
Correct, primary streets and corner.
And corner lots.
And corner.
Not all sides.
I don't think so.
Carrie?
No.
I'm a yes, so we'll go back to Lisa. You can break the tie, buddy.
Only on T5 and T4?
No, it's, uh...
Only on location, he's doing map stuff.
It's T5 and 6 would have the...
T5 and 6.
T4 are already...
I can't hurt these kids, man.
I could support potentially T5, but I think we, if we want to use that T6.
Sounds like a no.
How about five-foot minimum T6 and 10-foot minimum T5?
We're doing map stuff again.
Oh, we're never doing that, yeah.
Nope, sorry.
Can we, instead of, okay, um...
I almost feel like we just need to have a work session at this time.
I thought we said that in November.
I mean, we did, but we're sitting here going through...
Say what we're doing, what we're going to do.
So we've made two motions, voted them down.
So can we just make it as, look, we've got concerns about the trees?
Yes, we can, we can leave it, we can say something, but we're, we're concerned about the issue of enough space for canopy trees.
Okay, so just express that person. We just want to express a concern about enough space for trees. Thank you.
Canopy trees.
Canopy trees. What else you got, buddy?
That's it?
That's it? Wow! So your turn.
No, let her read it.
Oh, I'm pretty, I'm pretty happy with...
Can we read what she has? And then maybe make a motion?
There may be some, well, I, I think what Ms. Robinson, Robinson suggests is we just give them our ideas. You want to read them back to us?
Sure, um, protection for cemetery, um, buffer setbacks, et cetera. Uh, number two, remove Grave Street from map. Number three, bonus square footage rather than bonus units. Number four, refine language to clarify unit sizes. Section 1.6.2.3. Uh, five, review the purpose section of the former code to address principles of SIA as adopted. Number six, uh, 7.8.2.7 should allow four side panels, that's on the awnings. Uh, number seven, uh, review 8.2.6.3.1.1, which is the 300 si, um, center, center line spacing, which is a engineering thing, so I put review because we'll have an engineer review that. Um, review 8.3.2.1.4, and that had to do with the, uh, distance with the utility meter and a, and a tree planter, so we'll have, uh, you know, a technical staff take a look at that. Number nine, removal of parking considerations to address as part of the larger code review, um, references, parking consideration references in here. And then number 10, concerns about sufficient space for canopy trees.
Right, so we are done with the, um, text. And we've done a lot of work on the map, but we haven't finished the map yet, so, um, let me just kick it off to get you guys going. Uh, and again, I, I, I don't want to, I don't want to micromanage, but I'd like, uh, council to give some thought to the impact, uh, of a, uh, T6 looming over, um, the CHRA, uh, housing, uh, public housing properties there. Just think about that as, uh, as, as you take a look at it. Any concerns, just thinking about that?
Are you thinking about Sixth Street specifically?
Right there.
Right there.
Yeah, Sixth Street, yeah. It's like Crescent Hall.
Any, any concerns with that? Okay. The, um, the other thing I'd like council to give some thought to is the possibility of, um...
301?
Uh, Avon.
Yes.
Is it 301? I'd like council to give some thought to the possibility of, um, I, I do worry that the height of that building will be at, or maybe slightly below Belmont Bridge if we go with the, the current configuration. So I'd like council to give some thought to some creative approaches to that. I know the open space, uh, issue is a challenge, but at least give some creative thought to making certain that Belmont Bridge is not looming over that property, that, that property is like enhancing...
Right.
Yeah, as we drive through, um, drive through Belmont Bridge and see a property that's above it as opposed to below it. There's, uh, there's a lot of words, would you kind of net that out?
Mm-hmm, creative approaches, so bridge is not, uh, looming seems to be the word.
Well, yeah, we, we build the property above the bridge as opposed to below the bridge.
Right. The only concern I have with that is what that does with, we're, we're essentially putting a T6 over a R2. So that's it, if you look at Grave Street.
No, there at Avon.
There we're at Avon, yeah.
Aren't we here?
No, Avon.
On the west side of it.
It's across the street.
Yeah.
Champion River.
We're not talking about that.
That, that big open space between, uh, Bex, Bex and...
Okay.
Yeah.
I was on the wrong side of the road. Although not much different.
What are, what are their, um, other map issues?
Uh, so going back to what we discussed at the work session, I think largely agreed on, if not unanimously, I think we said west of Second Street, um, so west of Friendship Court, uh, where the Gleason and, uh, Apex Building are going up, uh, between Monticello and Garrett, uh, and along the railroad, should be T6.
Mm-hmm. Where?
Yeah. Uh, so this area, yeah.
That should be a T6.
Yeah, I mean, if we're talking about existing character of neighborhoods, we have nine-story buildings going up there right now.
I mean, okay...
And the same is true over here.
I'm willing to have council take a look at it.
All right.
Mm-hmm. Uh, and similarly, last time we talked about, uh, on either side of Fourth Street Southeast, um, we talked about T6 next week. You proposed this thing, or you, we, we negotiated a lot actually over this. Either side of it, where we currently have nine-story buildings going up, um, I think we said that it should be T6 along the railroad track, but to keep it T5 along, uh, along Garrett Street so that it wouldn't loom over, uh...
Wait a second, I decided that where we have nine-story buildings going up, that's where we should have T6. It's what you said. Where would you like to fill us in on that since you have had a long conversation with yourself about that?
We, in our work session.
No, we did not.
We absolutely had this long conversation. We, we talked about how if it was along Garrett Street, it would loom over Friendship Court. We said only on the back by the...
Let me offer you a brief reminder. I do believe that when you have, based on this, if you have a T6, there's got to be open space near it and associated with it. So where are you going to put the open space if you keep proliferating these T6s?
And certain types of streetscapes. Remember, this is not, this is a, a different type of zoning ordinance. You've got to have a bunch of elements that work together. So, um, it'd be great to recommend to council that these additional areas be looked at and studied, but you really need to look at more than just building height. You've got to, the whole purpose I have in this kind of ordinance to start with is to bring the public realm, the private realm, and as well as the form of the buildings all in sync.
So, Jody, you're right. We're never going to get this comp plan in two years because we're going to have these consultants do it work for two years and then we're going to come on this dais and break it apart.
Maybe that's why it's a bad idea to pay people to do the work instead of having the community...
We probably have professional planners.
We digress.
Um, so I'm not quite in favor of that last proposal, uh, Rory, but that's just me. Anyone else? Okay, yeah.
I support it.
Do we have minutes from that meeting?
We have two, two, five, two to five. Okay, next. Next map amendment.
I would just like to understand, and, and I don't need any specific, oh, can I just point? I don't, oh, you have a pointer? Of course you have a pointer. Who's the presenter?
Don't, don't, yeah. Don't, don't look, don't look at yourself. It's working, it's working, it's working.
How you make it work?
Depends on the angle.
Yeah, just, let me point at you. Where do you want your point?
Yeah, you can point, it helps a lot.
Stick. I'm specifically talking about the area of west of Ridge Street around 4th.
I can't read the words.
I know, there's no map. Uh, the area that is currently zoned WME, I'm just wondering why that's being transferred into the DE. How'd you get a pointer? Does that make sense?
Brian, it might work if you handle it from here.
Yeah, evidently I'm pointer inept, can't do it.
So you're talking right there.
Oh, cool.
Yeah, and, and the, now, I, just wondering.
What are you wondering?
It's in the SIA?
It's in the SIA. I mean, these were all, this was designated as, this was all designated as Phase 1 by council. Everybody agreed to it.
Okay.
And it's in the SIA.
Okay.
So it was included, yeah.
And then the little, okay.
Right, are there any, are there any other map questions, concerns, amendments?
We're removing the north side of Graves.
Yeah, she's got that already. Rory got that.
Thank you. Did we vote on that?
We did.
Yes, yeah.
Uh, do we talk about the southwest corner next to the cemetery? Because I would argue, make that T5 and then make more T6...
Right here?
Up where the bottom of the hill is, uh, just like this bit of T6. Make that T5. Make this area a T6, it's in a tiny, like, it's in a depression 30 feet below grave for everyone else.
So this corner here, T5, and then T6 where?
Uh, above.
Right here.
That area, yeah, which is down the hill where...
8.2. Three notches.
Point, point two.
So this corner right here, taking that to T5 and doing T6 down in the three-notched area like in here.
Yeah.
More linear.
Okay.
Fine. No. No. To protect the, no. To protect the, around the, the cemetery.
Well, you said no.
No. Yes.
Okay.
She said no, she didn't say no.
No, I didn't say no.
All right, so I think we got unanimous. Okay, what else? What else you got?
But he's saying we were taking that corner by the cemetery to T5?
T5, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I thought, I thought you nodded.
And still looking at protections around that.
I hope that doesn't lead to a campaign next to a plaza.
Is there anything else you guys would like to do with the map? Ms. Creasy, would you remind us what we decided to do with the map, please?
Okay, um, I want council to look at the impact of, of a T6 area looming over CRHA properties, 301 Avon Street, creative approaches, um, so that the property can be seen above the bridge. Uh, number three, west of Second Gleason Apex area between Monticello and Garrett, be T6.
No, I thought we said consider, have them considered, not be. Give some thought.
Consider.
And I'm sorry, I think the correct address is 310 instead of 301 Avon Street.
Yeah, 310 is this one. This is the...
Yeah, that's what we're talking about, that's 310.
The Oakfield.
Yeah, the Oakfield, yeah.
All right, um, take corner of cemetery, down to T5, and extend T6 north, and then also including the remove Graves, um, properties from the map.
All right. Making sausage jam. Is there anything else we'd like to chat about tonight?
I'd like to move adjourn till February.
We should probably vote on that report, right?
No, no, um, Ms. Robinson suggested that we just make recommendations, abort the recommendations with council.
I would add a suggestion...
More formally.
You should move to approve those recommendations to be transmitted to council.
Um, sure, uh, I move to, uh, submit the report to council with the recommendations as stated just now by Missy.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed.